Thank you and good evening. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. This evening has two meetings. The first is the Select Board Meeting and the second is the meeting of the Governor Stoughton Trustees. And for clarification purposes, the Select Board members serve according to the will of Governor Stoughton as the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust. On July 16th, 2022, Governor Baker cited to law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31st, 2023. This act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions. Under these procedures, all votes this evening will be by roll call vote. I want to just say thank you to everyone for accommodating the switch relatively late from intended meeting in the Conan Room to Zoom due to the accommodation of an illness by your chair. And I did not want to expose any colleagues or staff or members of the public to unintended consequences. So, thank you for that. Our order of business this evening will probably have us recessed after item 22, thereabouts on the agenda. We will then go into the trustees meeting. And then we will return to the board meeting for executive session and adjourn from the executive session of the Select Board. That's the roadmap for tonight. I'm Arthur Doyle, serving this year as your chair. And let us do the introductions. Mr. Vice Chair, Mike?
Mike Sula is Vice Chair. And I just want to thank the Chair for soldiering through and keeping with the schedule tonight, and I hope you're feeling better.
Thank you, and I am confident of the evening knowing that if anything happens, you as Vice Chair will be right there to pick up the pieces for me. Richard?
Richard Wells, Secretary and Mr. Chair. As I told you as we started, you just give me the nod and I'll make a motion that we have a hard stop at 8:00.
Number Bradley?
Aaron Bradley, member.
Number Musto?
Roxanne Musto, member.
Mr. Milano, our Town Administrator?
Hi, Nicole Milano, Town Administrator.
And Liz Anapoli, Executive Administrative Executive Assistant.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, welcome. At this time, let's join, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
indivisible.
indivisible.
with liberty.
justice. for our home.
Thank you. At this time, we turn to public comment. And as a reminder for the public, we have up to 15 minutes set aside going to the policies of the Select Board for public comment with each speaker allowed up to three minutes. If someone is calling in, pound six on the phone for muting and unmuting. If they want to raise a law of the hand would be pound nine to do so. The participants are asked to please identify themselves by name and address. And the Chair recognizes the respectful manner with which our citizens participate in public comment. The first hand that I see raised is that of Tucker Smith. Can she be promoted, please? Welcome, Tucker.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tucker Smith. I'm 43 years a homeowner at 1632 Canton Avenue. I read that the building commissioner, Mr. Prondak, would discuss the stretch building code and recent changes made to it tonight. Since I'm not in a position to know what he will present, I wanted to step forward early as a Milton resident and raise the fact that the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources has created a stretchier, more ambitious opt-in energy building code. Adopting this code would require approval by a future town meeting to take effect. I'm too old to be a Pollyanna. I know that many Milton residents fear changes ahead of different kinds and in their minds, but these are not business as usual times. The purpose of every building code is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of inhabitants. Who would imagine that building codes would ever be designed with the climate crisis in mind? New building code is a powerful tool with the potential to transform a structure from polluting to protecting and climate mitigating. We are losing time to ensure a livable future for our children, grandchildren, and neighbors. Each newly constructed building becomes part of our community for decades to come. So, let's do it the smartest way that technology and analysis will allow. Building, construction, and renovation industries can drive billions of dollars of cost-effective green economic stimuli. So, let's be sure our buildings create both a clean energy economy and an environment which serves all citizens. I advocate for the town of Milton to do what other Massachusetts municipalities have already done and are in the process of doing to pass the specialized opt-in energy code. Public outreach about it so that we all understand it will be crucial to its success. May's annual meeting warrant is closed. So, I pose a question. Will there be a special fall meeting? And could this be on it? In closing, I thank the Select Board and Mr. Zulus's leadership especially for authorizing Milton's Climate Action Planning Committee last month. I see that the committee charges posted on the town's website already, and I hope that recruitment of members is well underway. Adopting the specialized opt-in energy code should be a part of that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn to item number four on the agenda. A discussion approval award of $7,855,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2023 bonds dated February 16th, 2023, and award $12,487,000 in general obligations bond anticipation notes dated February 16th, 2023. And we have Town Treasurer Jim McCallough with us. Mr. McCallough?
Good evening. We held our, we hit, started off with, we had a meeting a few weeks ago with standing in pores. We had Nick, Amy, our town accountant, Charlie Arasessa, and Tim from planning. We gave them a story about how great Milton was. They believed us, so we retained our AAA rating. Tonight, we have two issuance. First one is a long-term bond. And we had 12 bids on it. The original amount was $8,560,000. The winning bid was Robert W. Baird Company. They came in, they gave us a premium of $850,258.90. Net interest cost is going to be $2,045,175.58. So, the total interest cost on this long-term bond is 2.723508%, which is a vibe that seems to be a very good rate. The second issuance is a short-term bond that's going to run through August of this year. And that is all for the fire station. The winning bid on that was Oppenheimer. We had four bids. The bid premium was $115,130.14. Net interest cost is going to be $187,679.61. And net interest cost on that was 2.789072. We ended up using some of the premium on the long-term bond to buy down the amount that we're actually borrowing. See, what we're actually borrowing is $7,855,000 on the long-term bond. And any questions?
Mr. Chair, you need a motion?
Oh, we do. Mr. Milano, do you have comments that you wanted to make at this time?
Sure, Mr. Chair, this motion is quite extensive. So, to help the board out, I can share my screen here, and I'm happy to read it if that would be helpful.
Most helpful, thank you.
So, the motion would be that the maximum useful life of the capital projects listed below is hereby determined pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, to be as follows. As the table shows, network switches upgrades with the useful life of 10 years, paving improvements with the useful life of 15 years. Further, that the sale of $7.855 million in general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2023 bonds of the town dated February 16th, 2023, the bonds to Robert W. Baird and Company, Inc. at the price of $8,645,522.37 in accrued interest. If any is hereby approved and confirmed, the bond shall be payable on February 15 of the year and in the principal amounts and bare interest at the respective rates as displayed on the table on the screen. Further, to approve the sale of $12,487,000, 4.50% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated February 16th, 2023, and payable August 30, 2023, the notes to Oppenheimer and Company, Inc. at par and accrued interest of any plus a premium of $115,130.14. Further, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, their preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 26, 2023, and a final official statement dated February 2, 2023, the bond official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be inherent by or ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a sale, of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 26, 2023, as revised in February 1, 2023, and a final official statement dated February 2, 2023, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be inherent by or ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further, that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the bond official statement. Further, that the town treasurer and the Select Board be inherent by or authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events, disclosure, undertakings, and compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2 to 12, in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefits of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further, that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to post issuance federal tax compliance procedures, continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed insufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further, that any certificates or documents related to the bonds and the notes collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of documents in all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. And further, that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be inherent by or authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary at convenience to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. And that's the full motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this motion as articulated by the Town Administrator in the brief description for approval.
Second?
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Wells, and thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. McCallough as well. It has been moved and seconded by Mr. Wells, seconded by Mr. Zulus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you.
I usually get in fairly early in the morning. If anybody wants to come by early, there are about 30 signature pages to this, these two issuances. So, it takes a little time to go through all the pages.
Jim, before you leave, so I'm looking at my schedule. I'm tied up to like 10:45. If I came in right around 11:00, I have plenty of time once I get there. Is that enough time to do it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I can wait, I can wait around. I just have to get it, I just have to get it fixed up by tomorrow.
All right, I'll be in around 11:00 tomorrow morning.
And Jim, you're going to stay with us for the next item, item number five on the agenda?
Yep.
Discussion approval point treasurer collected James McCallough as the custodian of a property off Thatcher Street, Milton Assessor's parcel 1D D-11-27 in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, Subsection 77B. And Kevin is with us. Tim, do you want to give a little introduction to that? And then we can turn to Kevin?
Yeah, I was appointed prior for previous auctions. But there was a slither of land that was picked up on a title search on Thatcher Street, and it actually still belongs to the town of Milton. And the people that live in the house now, they actually have a deck on the town of Milton's land. This was never turned over to them. So, we're, right now, we're in the process of discussing with them. And hopefully, we can come to some conclusion. We may just auction the land off.
And Mr. Milano, any further comments to Mr. McCallough? Then we'll turn to Town Council, Kevin Frytack.
No, this town acquired this property by tax title. We need to appoint a custodian in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 77B. And this would enable the treasurer to carry out, to maintain it and to carry out an auction if that's the direction the town chooses to go in. Kevin, fill in the blanks if I missed anything.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Select Board, Kevin Frytack from the Office of Town Council. So, you may recall that a few months ago, there was a complaint filed in Norfolk Superior Court against the town of Milton regarding a piece of land. That is the piece of land, it's the subject of this particular item. It is a parcel of land that exists behind a lot that's located off of Thatcher Street. The parcel is owned by the town. It's a property 1.01 acres. It's assessed on the assessor's website, $100. It came to the town as part of a much larger piece of land back about 100 years ago by way of tax. And then that large piece of land was subdivided into four pieces. And each of the four pieces was sold to the owners of the lot in front of it. Basically, major off of Thatcher Streets, Thatcher Street. I think it's 99, A, B, and C, and D. Although three out of the four owners of property on that particular strip bought the parcels from the town after the town acquired them through foreclosure, this one remaining parcel was never purchased. And so, it's remained in the interest of the town, held by the town ever since then. So, on this title statute, this land, after the foreclosure happened, was conveyed to the town by what's called a treasurer's deed. And now, it's the town's municipal purposes, which gives the town the opportunity to use the land or to dispose of the land like it would dispose of any other property that would include going to town meeting, getting authorization plan and negotiating a sale price with the owner. It also would, you'd have to look at 30B, but the 30B process, but given the value of the property, much of 30B wouldn't apply. So, that's the typical way that it goes. However, because this property was acquired through tax title, the section of the general laws that Nick just cited this Select Board to authorize the treasurer to sell the land at public auction. There'll be notice, it'll be posted in two different, the treasurer needs to give notice to the prior owner of the land. There's also potentially some balance that's still owed to the town by way of whatever was, you know, an issue in that tax title matter a long time ago. And I'm sure Jim can take a look at that. But what will happen here is that if the select treasurer under the statute to sell this land at auction, he'll follow the steps in the statute that I just described. There'll be an auction at the property. We, we think that the only party that's going to show up to bid on this property would probably be the people who are immediately adjacent to it and that have filed the lawsuit against the town. And so, by selling this property to them, our hope is that that will resolve the litigation, and it'll also resolve the fact that the town owns this piece of land that has had some use by neighbors for quite a period of time. So, without getting too deep into the weeds, there's some title issues and some use issues that are sort of at stake here or at issue here as well. And it's my opinion that this is a way, and I think it's the preferable way, subject to the Select Board's consideration and approval, of course, of this. So, that's, that's the background that I can provide. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, you were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Kevin. I'm familiar with the property. The houses are actually stacked. I think if my memory is right, they share a common driveway. My question, Kevin, is this a build? You said one acre, is this something that's, so it's not buildable?
Oh, no, it's not one acre, it's 0.01 acres.
Oh, 0.01, okay.
Very small slither of land.
I got it, that answers my question. I know where it is, I'm following it. So, the motion, the Mr. Chair, this final point, the motion that you have here on the item five, that would cover this, in what Kevin refers to as appointing the, the authorizing the town treasurer to put this out for public auction.
Correct? That's correct, okay. So, a second?
I'll second.
I'll make, I'll make that as a motion, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. This moves to the seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you, everyone. Jim, thanks again for being with us. And you have our numbers if we're not diligent in getting to you for signatures, all right?
Okay, yeah, the earlier the better.
You're going to have donut holes in the morning, Jim?
I may stop and get some for you.
I will turn now to item number six on our agenda. Good night, Jim. Problem is, Richard, he knows where we live.
Yeah, well, he can get to your house before he get to mine. He's five to you, ten to me.
Item number six, discussion, Building Commissioner Joseph Prondak to discuss stretch energy code, recent changes to the stretch code. And Mr. Prondak is with us, Nick. To you for introduction, please.
Chad, the Commissioner asked to have a few minutes to speak to you about the changes to the stretch code and what that could mean here in Milton. And so, he's here now to take that on. Joe?
Welcome. Thank you, Chairman Doyle. Board members, Joe Prondak, Building Commissioner. I'm here to basically brief the board on some significant changes that have been made to the existing stretch energy code that the town adopted back in 2009. And I think it kind of begs the question, it is, because of these changes, should the adoption of the original stretch code be put back in front of town meeting to see if they do want to stay in it? So, what happened? Of course, if there are any, it's a complicated code. So, if there are any questions along the way, certainly, I can, I can try and delve into those. But basically, the state, up until this point, has had two energy codes. One was just a regular energy code where you, that basically most of the country uses. And then we had, back in 2009, the state created a more, a more significant code, a stricter energy code that local towns could adopt, and the town of Milton adopted it. Within, within the stretch code, there's a process called a HERS rating. And HERS rating is basically a computerized analysis of the performance of the energy features in your home. And in order to comply with the stretch code, you have to meet a certain number. The lower the number, the lower the score, the better the number. When we first adopted it, that number was approximately 65. Up until January 1st of this year, it was 55. And it has just dropped to 52. And then in July of 2024, that will drop to 42. The big difference, when we adopted the code, we adopted it with all its future updates. But the big difference now is when we adopted it, the requirement for HERS energy rating applied only to new single-family homes. In this recent update mandated by DOE, Department of Energy Resources, and I'll just back up a little bit. They informed us of this update in mid-December. It told us it would go into effect in mid-December of 2022. And they told us it would go into effect of January of 2023, January 1st, January 2nd, actually. In my 37 years as a building inspector, changes to a code like this always came with a six-month concurrence period where the user of the code could choose to use the old code or the, or the new code. And what it did was it gave inspectors, towns, contractors, architects, engineers, it gave them time to figure out exactly what impact this type of a change would have. That, that, that didn't happen. It was just, it was sprung upon us in the middle of December and went into effect January 1st. But, so the change, the big change, when we adopted it, the HERS energy rating only applied to these new single-family homes. It now applies to additions to single-family homes of 1,000 square feet or more of conditioned space or if the addition is more than 50% of the existing floor space. So, for example, if you had a 700-square-foot house and you put on a 350-square-foot addition, it would, it would also kick in this requirement. And it also applies to renovations of existing homes when you basically renovate more than 50% of the existing conditioned area. So, to kind of quantify the effect of that, back when we adopted the energy code, this, this HERS energy rating was estimated, added about $3,000 to the cost of a new single-family home. Over time, that cost has probably gone up, safe to say around $8,000 to $10,000 on a typical new single-family home. However, if with this now going into effect in being applicable to these certain-sized renovations and additions, in order to pass a HERS rating, it can mean that you would have to gut the entire house in order to insulate all the walls, possibly change all the windows. It could include putting in a new heating system. It could include even replacing appliances. The cost of this potentially could add. And I've talked to several HERS raters, I've talked to some contractors. It is so new and so, it's just such new territory right now that the numbers aren't quite, aren't quite clear. But this could easily add $20,000 to $50,000 to a renovation or in addition to a single-family home. So, it just seemed to me or struck me that when the town adopted it, it was clear that the HERS rating only applied to new single-family homes in that, had this change come up at town meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure, town council would have said that would, that would have qualified as out of scope. So I bring this up not as a, I'm not a climate change denier. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to stay in the middle of this debate. But I think it's important that you are aware of, of, of the potential this can have on, the cost of, of additions and renovations to homes and the affordability. That, that, this, this change can have, the impact on, on the affordability of these types of renovations and additions. So that's, that's about as brief as I can make it, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
They changed my frame location. I had to chase it down. My apologies when I muted. Thank you, Joe, very much. The floor is open, Ms. Musta. You're recognized. And then, Mr. Wells.
Thank you. I would like to find out, have you had a chance to speak to any other towns? Just wondering how they're dealing with this. Towns that might have passed the same things that we had passed. And also, I think this town has a lot of old, structures, a lot of own old homes in the town. I think it could add quite a bit. I, I'm just wondering if we have a better sense in this town, what we're looking at. I know you gave us a range. Just wondering if you have any more information on that. And as well, like I said, what other towns have been doing with regards to this new HERS rating.
Yep. At, at this point, we don't have a lot of information because it is so new. It just came into effect January first and, my counterparts in other towns are still scratching their heads on the effect that this will have. Contractors have expressed grave concern to us over especially jobs that they've already priced. And, and already, already made plans for, and even architects and engineers to now, you know, this will apply to any project that is applied for after January first. So it, it's all so new that we really don't understand the full impact yet.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Bradley?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Joe. So I get that, I can, I can, just the fact that you're here, I know it's significant. I've known you long enough, the fact that you're coming here. So what about historic aspects? Like so many of, I mean, I know, additions and renovations are a big part of what your office has handled for so long. In addition to new, new construction. What about a house that has, like, what if, and I'm just pulling a rabbit out of my hat here. What if like the, the historic New England, New England project will come in today versus what came six years ago?
There, there are exemptions for certified historic properties. Either on the National Historic Register, the Massachusetts Register, or even the town if it had one.
Are there any other exemptions besides historic exemptions? Or is that, are those the only ones?
That's the only one I'm aware of.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add two quick questions. One was, this is a statewide effort, from what I understand you think. So this is a statewide effort, to eliminate admissions to combat the climate change so that we can be, we can be with our neighboring states. It's my understanding. So I know they have regional, goals that they have set for themselves. So this is, this is a statewide thing. Are there, are there repercussions if we do not follow the state guidelines?
Yeah. So if, if the, if the town were to opt out of the stretch energy code, we would lose our green community status and any benefits that come along with that.
Okay. That's a huge thing. And that's very troubling. My other question is, can you explain to me what fifty percent of renovation is? Is it over time? Or can I do, let's say, the top floor of my house this year? The bottom half of my house next year? Like how, how do they track that, the fifty percent?
We've actually, so the state has put on, through the Mass Save Program, they've put on some several seminars, basically for, for building professionals. I've attended several of those and the question has been asked a couple of times. And the persons, leading the seminar haven't, haven't given us an answer yet on exactly how that would work. I, I, for example, the, the Massachusetts Disability Code, or the, the Architectural Access Code, that has a, a three-year period. So, so, any renovations to a public building, that happened within a three-year period, you would hold them up. But, but we don't have that information yet on how to apply this code. If somebody wanted to separate out their, their additions and portions of the property.
And do we have any, do we have any idea how much it will cost the town if we lose our green status?
The only conversation I've had so far with Bill Ritchie was that when, when green communities first came into effect, when the grants first started coming around, we, we were entitled to up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. And, but then because so many other communities jumped on board, according to Bill, that two hundred fifty has now dropped down to a hundred thousand a year.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Mike, and then Nick?
Chair Joe, at Citizen Speak, we were urged to, have town meeting pass an opt-in energy code. Are you aware of what that is? And if so, can you describe it for us?
Briefly. So I, I haven't quite had the time to attend the seminars on that yet.
Okay.
But my understanding is, the op, the specialized stretch code, which would be an, an addendum to this current stretch code. So the current stretch code would remain in effect. It would apply equally to the same buildings that it applies to now. But basically what it's trying to do is get it, it, any houses that, that qualify, to either a net zero or a passive house, basically, or all electric. So basically eliminating fossil fuel usage. Getting a house to net zero. I'm not quite sure how that happens.
So, so Joe, it sounds like, it sounds like it would be stretch energy code plus.
It, it absolutely is. It's a stretch energy code on steroids, basically.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Lano?
Well, Joe addressed it. I was just gonna chime in on the amount of money funding for green communities. So since, since Milton became a green community, which was, I think, back in 2011, we received close to two million dollars, both in green communities funds and utility reimbursements for energy efficiency projects. So, not necessarily all green community funds, but Joe's right, we're, you know, we're shooting for about a hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, Bill Ritchie's done such a great job in terms of chasing down these monies for us. So there has been real money coming to Milton in the past several years through the Green Communities Program, that we have been an active participant in and taken a lot of advantage of to, whether solar panels, electric vehicles, electric vehicle charging stations, LED lights, insulation across the board, just a lot of great projects across town facilities, town school facilities, I should say.
Mr. Wells?
I was just gonna echo what Nick said. As Joe knows, as my prior roles at department head, we were, all of the department heads with Bill, we were extremely aggressive on every building in town. Everything is, Nick says, from lights, windows, roofs, saw, generators, you know, getting out of, converting our generators to natural versus, you know, diesel fuel, centralized fueling for all the pop, getting rid of all the tanks that existed at so many municipal buildings. And, I, I think, Joe, you'd agree with me. I don't think we'll ever get it back to two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year again. We would just,
Yep.
We were so, we were upfront so early on and that, we did really well. The same with recycling. We were one of the first in community-wide single streamers. So we did extremely well, was very profitable, in those first years, but I don't see us getting back to that again. And my, just my last question, Joe, to you is, if I'm a contractor and I understand this, and a citizen wants to hire me to do, it would probably behoove me to do this in quarters. So in year one, I applied to do, you know, the first floor, the second year, we put a dormer on, and the third year, I don't know, we extended up family room. Would that be a way that a contractor would use to try and get around this?
Yeah, that's still, still up in the air question, a question that we haven't been able to get answered from DOE yet. And whether or not that, that, that will work.
Just another file on your, on your plate, Joe.
You know, and I would just add again, I'm, I'm not opposed to, 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 you, you know, greening up the community and, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I, but I will say, you know, in all the, discussion that there's been over the past several years about affordable housing and accessory dwelling units, this can have a big effect on whether or not that can happen. It can have a big effect on affordability of homes. You, you know, if, if, for example, you know, you had a couple of kids coming back from college and you had a one-story ranch where you wanted to put a second floor on it, you would certainly add significant cost to that project. And, and that could affect whether or not you could actually do it. Or maybe you want to bring your parents home instead of sending them to a nursing home or retirement community and have them live with you. The, the effect, the cost of this can be a very, a very real effect.
Mr. Zulus?
It, it, it will, sorry, it will. So we adopted the stretch code with all its future updates. So again, in July of twenty-four, that, that fifty-two rating that we're doing right now is going to drop down to forty-two. And the HERS raters are saying it's just going to be impossible, on, on existing homes to get, to get that rating, to achieve that rating.
Thank you. Mrs. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recognizing certainly what Richard just said about the burdens on Joe, might I suggest that the town administrator, since this is an important issue, might, might seek some other resources, and other information that we can get on this from other, so there must, I know this is new, but certainly there should, there must be other resources out there that can get us information. Maybe we can get someone in here to, to address the board along with Joe, to give us more information about this, because this is an important issue, as Joe has pointed out. So, so that's my suggestion. If maybe the town administrator can, get some, get, get us some more resources so we can learn, learn more about this.
Yeah, I, I would think we have to talk to, you know, I can talk to my counterparts in other cities and towns, but I also think we need to hear from some architects and some builders. Those three key players.
Mr. Wells?
You just made me think of something there, Mr. Michael did. So, Joe, on all the pending, fortyBs that have been approved by the ZBA, does this apply to all of them? We're not, if we have pulled permits yet. I don't think any of them have, anyway. Maybe one.
Well, the Ice House has.
The Ice House has, okay, so.
They applied for the permit on, on September twenty-third, and that's actually in review right now. So it won't apply to the Ice House, but it will apply to, all those upcoming buildings. But again, they're, they're new buildings, so, it's, it's not as difficult.
Right, I get it. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Joe.
I had two quick questions. One is, I wanted to ask Mr. Freitag, if he had any run across any legal issues related to this. Kevin?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. I have not, actually. None of the other communities that I represent are, at this, at least not as closely as Milton is at the moment, but I'm happy to reach out and see if colleagues have dealt with it and I can report back to the board.
Thank you. And Mr. Prandak, do we know if this has in any way migrated into, purchases and sales of properties, conditions on purchase and sales?
I, I don't think so. Not sure how it would.
I was just thinking if renovation had begun, incomplete, et cetera, properties to be sold. What the implications would be?
I, I, I think there could be some complications down the road, but again, this is just, we're in the very early stages of implementing this.
Okay. I think Mr. Zulus has a good recommendation, based upon your very articulate explanation in this discussion, to do a further evaluation and bring something back to a subsequent meeting of the select board for consideration. Is that the consensus of the members? See, the head's nodding in affirmation, so let's move in that direction. Then we can get an idea, Nick, from you as to, and Joe, working together, what a reasonable timeline for that might be.
Yeah. And I would also add that within a couple of months, we will, we will certainly, dealt with some projects that this is going to affect. So we will, we'll have that piece of the puzzle in as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy you with us this evening.
Okay, thanks very much.
We're going to item number seven on our agenda, which is discussion approval annual town meeting warrant articles. Including some of the warrant articles that we're familiar with. And Mr. Lano, can I turn to you, please?
Sure. Town clerk was not able to join us tonight due to something that had come up. So, we were, wanted to give her the opportunity to talk a little bit more in detail about the general bylaw and zoning bylaw updates. But as she's not with us tonight, Mr. Chair, I think we can move on to the school building committee articles, the three that were submitted by the school building committee.
Please.
Sure. So, you know, Mr. Dirk O'Rourke is here to take us through each of those. I know he, he spoke with the school building committee last night and is scheduled to, be off the conservation commission next week. So if he could take us through where we are at with this project.
Welcome, Mr. O'Rourke.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Hope you're feeling better. Thank you for the time tonight. And, you know, thank you to the other members of the board. I'll do my best to be brief. I know you have a very busy agenda. But also do my best to be as detailed as possible. If you'd allow, I'd like to share my screen to present.
Chinese should be outside, yep.
Yep. And just let me know when it comes through.
I'll say.
Okay. So, you know, the, the school building committee met last night, you know, for us to, to kind of review the three articles that we have for the Maytown meeting, two of which deal with Gao Road. And the third one deals with funding essentially for the proposed project that we'll be doing. What I wanted to do is just kind of recap where we're at right now as a school building committee. The current enrollment, as everyone's aware, we're over-enrolled at the elementary level. We're essentially one grade level, above what the building capacities are that we have for the facilities. To exacerbate that, we're, we're aware of, you know, upcoming fortyB projects that are not in the NASDAQ enrollment projections. And then further, the MBTA zoning community, community work that's coming up too. You know, for us, we're concerned with this mainly because we're already overcrowded at this point, adding additional, units and additional children. I was just gonna further make it worse. So the school building committee, as you're aware, had, had an article last year. The intent is to build a new upper middle school at, the high school campus along Gao Road. By doing so, it basically creates a singular project that addresses the overcrowding at all levels of the district. Within the, within the existing spaces now, as I've touched on on a couple, a couple of occasions, all available space has been converted. There is no more space. You know, the, the library, as you can see here at Cunningham Collycott, it has been converted with offices and a classroom. What that does is by converting that space, it squeezes the middle portions of the library and basically further condenses it. Gymnasiums are now being used as classrooms. In the cafeterias, they're doing music on the stage. I asked you to look in the picture where the projector is towards the- In the cafeterias, they're doing music on the stage. I asked you to look in the picture where the projector is towards the back at the stage. And as you can see there, uh, essentially children that used to have classrooms with chairs and desks and now sitting on floors. Um, there are essentially carts for music and art and a number of the elementary schools that teachers need to. Uh, set up and break down after each class and move around. And then finally, we have children always. Um, throughout last year, a lot of the term I kept hearing about is educational excellence. Um, as you couple the overcrowded facilities with, you know, our underfunding that we have per pupil. I'm not sure how we're ever going to attain that that goal of educational excellence. Our committee is basically charged with addressing the half of the equation, the overcrowding of the facilities. What you'll see in the coming slides is basically four years worth of work that we're looking forward to to address that. For a site selection, uh, approximately two years ago, a year and a half ago, uh, we identified parcel D six five six A. Along Blue Hills Parkway and Gao Road is the preferred site uh for that upper middle school. As we worked our article last year for Maytown meeting, we voluntarily referred it back for further study, essentially addressing concerns. Uh, that we had in from opponents, specifically Home Inc. and Friends of Blue Hills Parkway. Uh, what we've done is created a three hundred foot conservation buffer along Blue Hills Parkway and then further conservation buffers along Home Inc. What you see before you hear is the work we've done over the past eight to ten months, uh, working with B S C engineering. Uh, we we developed a number of parcels. The school building committee voted last night for what we call school building committee parcel number two. What this is is first, a realignment of Gao Road that's shown in red. Uh, by realigning Gao Road, we're able to merge different portions of the parcel. Second is a fifty foot conservation buffer that exists now between Home Inc. and the the school. Uh, site. Additionally, on top of that, there's a fifty foot zoning buffer that's shown in red dashed lines. Uh, as I mentioned previously, there's a three hundred foot conservation buffer from Blue Hills Parkway. And then the remainder of the conservation land between Home Inc. and uh Brooksfield would remain conservation. Overall, this creates a six point four acre parcel for the new school, two point eight of which is. The conservation land. Uh, previously, we were using the majority of it. Now we're only using a third. Uh, the other portion is the parks land that we're utilizing. We're utilizing three point six acres of the parks land. Essentially twenty five percent of the overall parcel. So we've tried to surgically carve out the right amount of space to to make this project work. As you're aware, our previous design that we had utilized the majority of the parcel of conservation land and basically created, you know, conceptually a school that would be close to Home Inc. With the new alignment that we have and opening up that parks parcel, realigning Gao Road, we have an opportunity to place the building further away from Home Inc. More detailed, you know, as as we look, um, the the main butter that's next to the parcel that we have here, I've tried to blow up. From measuring on the municipal mapping tool that the town has. Uh, the house is approximately seventy five feet from the boundary of of their parcel. Uh, in addition to that, there's a fifty foot conservation buffer and then the other fifty foot zoning buffer. So. In total, distance to that parcel, to to that property or the home is about a hundred and seventy five feet. But the key thing to note there, that's the construction boundary. So I'm saying. Our intent isn't to build a school where you're seeing the red dash line. Our intent is to build the building further away, but you know, and I I I bring that up is that's always been our goal. Um, part of, part of what you see here too is a testament to our willingness to work with opponents on this project. We're fully aware of Home Inc.'s concerns, the Friends of Blue Hills Parkway. And moreover, even Pine Tree Brook, um, we're aware of some of the the influences that this will have on them. And we're willing to work with all of these people and folks going forward. As we go out on the site after, you know, my plan is to present to the conservation commission. Uh, and then have another site walk. As we go out on the site walk, all of those boundaries that I showed are flagged out there so we can physically see while you're on the site what they look like. In regards to the land swap, we've identified additional parcels uh from what we what we identified previously in twenty twenty two. Uh, here you see the two parcels in yellow and blue that were previously included in the land swap, along with an additional parcel shown in purple. Uh, along School Street. This parcel in Randolph Ave uh was one that we had in last year's land swap at approximately six point nine one nine acres. Uh, there were some conversations previously on this that the land wasn't developable, it was wet and stuff like that. And as you can faintly see, there's a brook that kind of runs along the edge. I went out to the site and walked it to take some photos. As you can see, Randolph Ave exists on the left there. There's a small brook that runs along as we start on the map, and then the remainder of it is all upland wooded area. Similarly, when you go to the top. And look down, uh, similar wooded area. An additional parcel that was um identified uh through some meetings with the conservation commission. Um, is a parcel along Kent Nav and Highland Ave, Highland Street, uh, that exists near Winter Valley, uh, which equates to additional five point one acres. And then finally, uh, from some, you know, additional work that was done, uh, Pope's Pond has been identified as an additional parcel that can be included in this. In total, we'll be converting approximately five fifty six point four seven acres into Article ninety seven. While taking out only six point four acres, essentially eight to eight point eight to one ratio, where our previous ratio was two to ones. We've improved that. Uh, and with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Miss, the chair dropped off. He's coming back into the meeting momentarily.
Did he drop off on purpose, Nick, or it just happened?
I am.
Mr. Vice Chair, better get ready.
Here in the meeting now. Mr. Doyle, can you hear?
This is coming back in through different avenues, so. Here we are, and Sean, thank you very much. I did get back in to hear your full presentation. On most of it. Uh, Mr. Wells has a question, so Richard.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks very much, Sean, for all your work on this and. Um, I guess you could describe your life in the past six weeks as like a category five hurricane. You probably won't, but that's, that's just my. My thirty foot, thirty thousand foot analysis of it. So just a quick question on the on the post, on the post pond. Acquisition, you familiar with this? C P A project that's on the on the. Board for the second bridge. This wouldn't affect that at all?
I I I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Uh, should I refer to the Beverly Park proposal?
Yeah, not the other park. I don't, I don't, I think, I don't think the park was included in what you were, I didn't see that on the way you described, Sean, but the. The bridge, the second bridge that's been in the planning now for over six years would be, we'd be all right there.
I I believe so. I I I I I'm not kind of up to speed on that project, you know, in regards to uh Beverly Park. Um, there there has been some asks to see if we could um zone that portion of the project into parks rather than uh just conservation. Uh, there's additional work that we have to do on that as far as surveying the boundaries, uh, so we include that as part of the swap.
Okay. That was my only question. Um, so just, just, I know, just one, I'm sorry, just on that aspect. So just a follow up, Sean. What do you want us to do next?
Well, I think for for tonight, um, you know, the intent was to give an update to, you know, to this board. Um, you know, is as you, as you alluded to, it's it's been a whirlwind in the past couple of weeks. Um, you know, we we, you know, our board, my committee is basically working on that parallel path that we've been talking about in the event the FOMP on fill through. Um, it did, we weren't happy about it and, you know, at least we have this as an option that we can work towards. Um, you know, for for right now, my next steps are to meet with the conservation commission. Um, a- again, an informational meeting with them on the fourteenth. Most likely followed by a site walk, similar to what we did last time.
Right.
And then after those are done, uh, get them to vote in favor of this. After their vote in favor, in meeting with the Parks Commissioners on a similar rhythm. Um, come back to this, to this board with their approvals and then look, seek, seek approval for this going forward.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I believe that. There was talk at one of the proposals that Richard was just alluding to, that there was going to be a playground actually put in over there. Um, Sean, do you have any, are you talking to any of those folks about their use for a playground?
I I I've been in contact with a couple of them, um, you know, the, for me right now, I I'm. I I'm catching up on some of that that stuff too, you know, most of my attention over the, you know, up at the end of the year was towards FOMP on and everything. It was just keeping this kind of on the back burner. Um, other things like that I haven't been acutely aware of. Um, but obviously, you know, whatever we can do, you know, to better the town, if, you know, includes additional work to do survey work for that and everyone's in favor of it, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, great, because I wouldn't want to put, I mean, eighty eight to, or whatever that percentage is to one is, you know, astronomical. I mean, that's a huge percentage of land that we're putting into Article ninety seven, but if there, if we can't use utilize that space for a playground on that side of town, I think that would be detrimental to that community. That was really looking forward to it. So if there's any way that we can just check in and make sure that we're not putting land in that they were hoping. To use as a playground, that would be awesome.
I just add, if I may, that I believe C P C is going to um. Be meeting tomorrow night and Beverly Park is on its agenda as a candidate for funding. And I can tell you that in conversation with Conservation Commission Chair. Uh, Karen, he has a high regard for that proposal and sensitivity to the need for a playground. Uh, on that side of town and working collaboratively in such a way as to make all of this. Um, come about. Mr. Zulus, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I I I, in terms of what we can do tonight. Um, seems to me that that we could approve the two articles uh for inclusion in the warrant, so the warrant committee could get going on it. I don't know that we would include the third one on the appropriation because we don't have a number on that yet. Um, but in terms of the, the, the authorizing acquisition and the land swap articles, if we. Move forward with improve approving them just for inclusion in the warrant, not not taking a position one way or the other, I think that would at least. Uh, move things along for the warrant committee. Um, just a suggestion.
Do you want to propose that as a motion, Mike?
If 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 uh if if people are willing to, then sure, I I will, I will, um.
Mr. Chair, just before Mike makes that motion, you were referring to I, right? Right, Mike? Item I on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, uh, that would be, that would be seven, seven, yeah, seven B Romanate one and Romanate two.
Sorry, I'm fine with that.
Um, all right, so I will move to include in the um annual town meeting warrant. Um, the two warrant articles submitted by the school building committee. Number one, authorizing the select board to acquire land owned by the town of Milton located off Gao Road and Blue Hills Parkway. Assessors map D block A lot sixty five and two authorize the transfer of various parcels of land. And authorize the select board to petition the legislatures for approval under Article ninety seven of the amendments in the Massachusetts Constitution related to the potential school project off Gao Road.
Second, Mr. Wells, Ms. Musto.
Um, sure, I just have a question. So is this just as a placeholder or can you just elaborate a little bit more for me?
The the motion would is to include the two in the warrant, not to take a position on either one, but to include them in the warrant. So they'll, so the warrant committee has now, we we would then. Submit the articles to the warrant committee and they can start reviewing them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any further comment? Discussion, say none, roll call, vote on the motion, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Uh, with respect to Roman, uh, I I I have three, if I can translate that. Is this something you would be bringing back, a recommendation for the appropriation in the near future, Sean?
Uh, that that is correct. We're we're working with, um. Um, you know, the architect's and our own as project manager, uh, that, you know, uh, we've been in touch with. Uh, to come up with budgetary numbers essentially for conceptual design. Um, you know, in in, you know, in anticipation of the approval of this land swap. Uh, for us, we'd like to hit the ground running, you know, uh, come the summer with with some of those conceptual designs on it.
Would you think the uh Slapwood Meeting of the twenty first would be too soon or?
I I I work better towards deadlines than keeping it open, so twenty first sounds fine.
Okay, that's great. I was planning on that. Nice. Do you have another question, please?
I do, for Sean. Um, I wanted to thank you for coming tonight and for explaining some of the things. Just wondering if you can send some more information forward. The presentation that you just did today, um, any updates on some specific numbers? Um, maybe I can reach out to you, um, and we can have a conversation and um look at some things, okay?
Yeah, definitely.
I don't want to obvise the whole meeting here, but some more information would be helpful.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else for Sean? Sean, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Nicely done and. Um, I echo the sentiment expressed earlier about the amount of labor that you put into this.
Thank you. Good night.
Seven B, warrant article for new development revolving fund, Department of Public Works trench excavation application. Inspection and paving fee revolving fund. And we have Chase Berkeley with us. Saving Chase, can we? Have you promoted? There you are. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you for having me. Uh, so the D P W is proposing this article to create a revolving fund to divert the permit fees we collect for street opening permits. Uh, and the main purpose for this is for us to be able to accept what we call payment in lieu of paving. And and the genesis of that is is basically the amount of work that the gas company does in town. So. Um, what we'd like to do is create a mechanism where the town can request a monetary payment. That would be deposited into this revolving fund that we can then use to pave the street. Uh, once the work has been completed by the uh the applicant. And and the reason for doing this is, one, that it gives the the D P W control over um how the street gets paved in the limits of it. Uh, because right now our right away regulations somewhat limit the amount of paving that the gas company is required to do. And two, um, it it also allows us to stretch the dollars further than the gas company can. So because the town participates. In regional bidding uh through the South Shore Consortium, so we we package up our paving bid with. Um, several other towns, more than a dozen, and get really good unit prices for uh pavement resurfacing. Um, we get a much better unit price than the gas company does. Um, so we can take their dollar and push it further than they can. Um, and 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 most of the time, and and particularly since all the explosions in two thousand eighteen in North Andover Lawrence. Uh, the gas company has has ramped up their capital program very aggressively. They're doing more main replacement uh over the last couple of years. Now than um they ever have historically, at least in in all of our time. And um. You know, they're they're opening up a lot of streets in town and we often get inquiries by residents to say, you know, why, why is only half of my street getting paved and anyone on. Uh, Belcher Circle or Granite Place would would recognize that. Um, so, uh, and then, you know, we have to explain that, you know, it's not, it's not your tax dollars paving the street, but we all want a. A whole new street curb to curb if it's possible. Uh, you know, it's a quality of life issue. It makes our job at the D P W much easier. So, um. So that's kind of the the genesis of of why we're requesting this article at this time. Um, we did a little financial analysis with the accounting department. To see what would the uh the impact be on the revenue stream. So right now our permit fees uh collect anywhere from fifty to sixty thousand dollars annually. Collect anywhere from fifty to sixty thousand dollars annually from applicants. You know, probably forty to fifty percent of this is from the gas company alone. So that would be diverted into this revolving fund. And then there would be a new fee established, which we would create this payment in lieu of paving fee that we could take payment. There is past practice by the town for doing this. So in, in previous projects for single streets. We've been able to successfully use the gift mechanism to accept the gift from the gas company. For the purpose of paving a street, but since there's so much of this work going on now, it seemed prudent to, to set it up as a system that we can continuously use. So, so that's all I had on that, but I'm happy to dive into more detail or, or answer any questions you have.
Good introduction. Nice to have you, Mr. Wells. You're muted, Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CB twelve, how are you tonight?
Doing well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, you notice the ironics that he mentioned Granite Place and Belcher Circle. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and put this in layman's terms for people at home because, you know, we've talked about this a lot. You're correct in that the gas company's done an unprecedented amount of main repair. From the Boston line straight across to Quincy and beyond into both cities over the past three years. So as you and I know, when they, when the contractor finishes and they pave. They just pave over the part where they dug up. So with this, if we were to do this and you took all the responsibility of paving. Moving forward, anywhere where they were placing main, would you then pave curb to curb as if you were? Would it then become part of your regular, how you repave streets on an annual basis?
Yeah, so that's the intention.
Okay.
The way we've drafted it, it gives us the option so that we could either continue to enforce our regulate, right-of-way regulations as written, which requires them to do the paving work. Or if it's advantageous for the town to take it over and pave the whole street, we can do it that way.
Because as you know, and, and anyone who's at home watching who understands this. In ninety-nine percent of the work that's been done here in the last three years, when the contractor paves. They just pave the, so people, residents would think, okay, I've lived through. Two years or a year and a half of having my street ripped up and detours and all that. I think, okay, well, the, the benefits at the end, the street's going to be all paved and then. You know, you know, as, as you know, we know it's the fastest part of the project. In the snap of a hand, the paving's done and they're looking at their street and all the, it's basically a patch. So I. I think this is a very good idea and I think it's one that residents will warmly receive. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Chase.
Mr. Zulus?
I'll move to approve the warrant article for a departmental revolving fund, Department of Public Works trench excavation, application, inspection, and paving fee revolving fund.
Second. Moved to the second. Any further discussion? Saying none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you, Mr. Berkeley.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your time.
Night, Chase. Take care. Seventeen, warrant article from the Bylaw Review Committee regarding the extension of the Bylaw Review Committee and an appropriation. Mr. Milano can?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I. I did not reach out to any members of the Bylaw Review Committee, so if we could revisit this topic, I'll reach out to them for the twenty-first of this month.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Zulus?
Could we have a brief discussion of this, just prior to the, just a couple of things we may want to flesh out?
Absolutely. Floor is open.
So I, I appreciate the article and I appreciate the, the, the time that's gone into it. There, then we may want to make some additional changes. It seems to me we may want to. Enhance the, the movement and the accountability here and perhaps we, we could make the membership, which is now currently appointed by the town, town moderator. Perhaps if it were appointed by, say, this board, perhaps that would be a useful change. So I just wanted to. Perhaps have some discussion of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I see, Ms., yes, Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I said the last time, this came up. This committee was appointed in two thousand fifteen. They've been going for eight years now. I, the last time we extended their, their appointment. From the moderator and to make this happen was approximately two years ago because that, at that time, they were saying that they couldn't get things done because of COVID. Which we completely understood when I was on the warrant committee. So we, we did. I think we've made a favorable recommendation in the warrant for that to happen, understanding that there was trying times. At this point in time, it's been eight years. We really need a committee that's working hand in hand with the town clerk. And with Joe Prandak, the, on the bylaws and the zoning bylaws. And I think that it is worthy of, of a discussion of how the. How and why the members have taken this long. To not give us anything. I haven't seen any report from them. I don't believe that they've made a report to town meeting. I have no idea how much further they have to go, but obviously if they're looking for an appropriation, which is honestly unheard of. For, for one of our volunteer committees. Maybe they need just a different set of eyes on these things to make it happen. So I would support. Changing the appointment process for this to fall under the select board at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I'm wondering a couple of things. One is, have we asked them for a formal report? And the second thing I would say is that if we're going to talk about any kind of a committee. And I know that we're tabling this to the twenty-first, I think we should talk about it at that point with the relevant people that are on it. I think this is premature to have this discussion without. You know, without speaking with them and finding out what's been going on and what their needs are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Just, just a quick question. This is Mr. Mullin and Mr. Neil. Are they the co-chairs or is Mr. Mullin just? Peter's, Peter's the chair?
Yes.
And who else is on the committee?
I have him in front of me if it's okay to read him.
Please.
Ingrid, I believe, and I'm sorry if I'm going to say this wrong, Ingrid Beatty. Peter, Peter Mullen, Susan Kieran, Alexander Whiteside, and Thomas Baldwin.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Erin.
Yeah, sorry.
Any further discussion? So we, we have a recommendation. For consideration. And we all agreed that we would bring this forward again at a meeting on the twenty-first. With the notion of finalization of a recommendation that would go forward.
Mr. Chair, just, just, just one comment. Do you think I might be proneness to invite Peter to come before us on the twenty-first? I think it probably makes sense. Oh, that's good, okay.
Actually, I'd put that on the table and we would definitely do so. Anything further on this item? And Nick, seven. E warrant article to accept the provisions of Mass General law chapter two hundred A, section nine A.
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. This, this article is to accept the provisions of MGL chapter two hundred A, section nine A. This is the provision of state law that deals with abandoned funds. If the town owes the vendor, somebody some money and we, we write a check and the check is not cashed, the, and. We follow a procedure by which we contact that person who the money is, is owed to. As stipulated by the statute, which requires different levels of notification, public posting, advertising in the newspaper. And over the course of a year, if those efforts to find that person are unsuccessful, the money then returns to the town. This is the process the town's been following. When we were taking a look at it. We have not yet found a town meeting approval and acceptance of the statute, so we're just bringing this back to, to clean that up and to have this formally accepted as the town's procedure moving forward. The alternative would be to turn this over to the state unclaimed property process, which would take three years of notifications. And the funds are then retained with the state at that point. So this is a more streamlined process here at the town level. And it's carried out by the treasurer. It's a process we've been following for the past, I'd say, eight to ten years anyway. So it's, it's what we intend to keep doing. I'd like to just formally adopt it and clean this up in terms of housekeeping.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Milano? Is there a motion to move accordingly?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to. Adopt, accept the provisions of Mass General law chapter. I hope I'm on the right one, two hundred A, section nine A.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Saying none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle? Yes, thank you. Intender item eight, discussion update approval, special town meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Milano, can we go into you, please?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And nothing specific on this. We had left it on there in case there's anything you or the board members wanted to discuss those ahead of next week's special town meeting. We certainly will have our prep meeting. On the thirteenth and the high school as well, just before that town meeting. But I don't have anything specific for this, other than to note that. The FOMC bond convent purchase is obviously something that is not intended to move forward. And the select board should probably request that it be referred back to it and, you know, you could take that vote either this evening or wait till the thirteenth to, to have that on the agenda ahead of the town meeting.
Pleasure of the members.
Would it make it easier for us to do it tonight?
I think.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion to refer this article back to the select board.
I'll second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion on that? Saying none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. That was a wise placeholder, Mr. Milano. Thank you. Number nine, discussion approval, letter of support for the Forbes House grant application. For the restoration of the barn and carriage house. This was in our packets. I do not see Heidi one with us on the attendee list. We have. Do us similar. Proposals.
Mr. Chair?
The legislature for the Forbes House in the past, Mr. Zulus? I see.
Yeah, it's, it's. Yeah, it's under.
Okay, thank you. Let's promote. Heidi, if you want. Heidi, you unmute. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board. Thank you for inviting me and recognizing that I'm on my husband's computer tonight. The Forbes House is requesting a matching grant of ten thousand dollars. From Preservation Massachusetts. There's seventeen seventy-two foundation. The monies would go toward the restoration of the windows on the barn and carriage house. It is a matching grant and we do have the matching funds in place. The total project for the windows. Is around seventy-five thousand dollars. So we've managed to raise from individual donors about sixty-five thousand dollars and we are asking. Preservation Massachusetts for the rest. We did get through the first hurdle. We submitted a letter of support or a letter of inquiry in December. And we're invited to submit a full application that is due on February twenty-fourth. Deliberations will occur in March and we should know by April whether or not we've received the award. The windows are part of a larger phase one project to make the barn and carriage house tight and dry. Addressing issues with the roof, the gutters and downspouts. Those, those items have been parceled out for a separate application. We'll be submitting to the. Preservation Project Fund of the Massachusetts Historical Commission. And then the foundation is also part of this larger project. So our request is for a letter of support signed by the select board. It's really important for us to show local community support and. I welcome your questions and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for being with us. Heidi, any questions for Heidi on this? Letter of support? Saying none?
You want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Please.
So I'll make a motion that we sign a letter of support for the Forbes House grant application. For the restoration of the barn and carriage house.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Moved in second. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Oh, Heidi, congratulations. And we look forward to seeing you back. With similar requests as you continue your venture.
Thank you very much and I hope I'll have some good news for you come April. I appreciate it.
Please bring it to us. We look forward to hearing from you again on this. Item number ten on our agenda is the discussion of formal annual shelter requests for proposals.
Mr. Chair, they are still working to finalize that request for proposals for modular construction, so that's that we defer this item tonight.
Okay, twenty-first?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question about that?
Ask, Nick, are you thinking of the twenty-first? Would that work?
Or? Yeah, I will update you as soon as we hear something in terms of them finalizing that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When, I, I'm asking the, the board and maybe Nick to help me with my memory because I'm getting older every second. When they, when they were in front of us last, did they say that they would have the proposal a month ago? Was it, was the request, was this supposed to have happened a month ago?
They are working to finalize this request for proposals on the modular construction piece and put it out. It was going to happen, they expected sometime in February or March, so they're, they're about on. In that ballpark as to where they expect.
Oh, they are on schedule. Okay, I thought it was earlier, so thank you for, I thought that they were already behind. We were already behind the eight ball on it.
No, this is about, this is about in keeping with that timeframe.
Okay, cool. Thanks so much.
Anybody else on this topic? Saying none, let's move to the next item, eleven, discussion approval, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'll accuse myself of this.
And I will have to do the same. Discussion approval fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, multiple retirement board cost of living adjustment. Mr. Milano?
Sure, so we have with this. Oh, she's already promoted. Paige Appolito is here on behalf of the retirement board to explain the cost of living adjustment request in letter. They had approved a three percent increase for cost of living adjustment for retirees. Special legislation was enacted by the governor to authorize that increase to go up to five percent. The retirement board subsequently voted to do so, but that action does require select board approval in addition to the retirement board approval. Paige, if I've missed anything, please feel free to fill in what I've.
Thank you, Nick. Welcome, Paige. It's great to have you with us.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Doyle, board members Lynn, Nick. Yes, so Social Security was able to give a five percent increase and PERAC in return has given us. Approval to increase this, just this one year up to five percent, which would be an additional two percent. We have already given three percent July first. And the board, the retirement board approves, approved it unanimously and we were, are looking for your approval on the same.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair? I'll, I'll move to approve the FY two thousand twenty-three Milton Retirement Board Cost of Living Adjustment of five percent. Pardon me, pardon me.
Mr. Zulus, since I have to accuse myself, can I ask you if you would take this session, please?
Absolutely. The motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Who do we go to first? Is it Roxanne or Erin? I don't know who do we go to first, but I'll, I'll go to Roxanne first. Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And myself, yes. Thank you. Arthur, I'm done. That was short and sweet. Paige, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to be back. Okay, Rich is back as well.
I am.
Next is item number twelve. Discussion approval, Select Board Finance Committee report fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget update. We had materials in our packet. As for other items, Mike, can we turn to you, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the presentation in the packet was the same presentation that we had last week, unless Nick tells me differently. And we had a finance committee, a joint finance committee meeting with the school committee this morning. It was very short because there is no update. We are waiting on certification of free cash from the Department of Revenue. We hope to have that by the end of the week or the first of next week. And we're waiting on that and also some additional work on the expense side in the town department. So that's what we're hoping to get some update on. I believe we set our meeting for next Monday morning. Is that right? Next Monday morning and hope to do more work on it then. So that's my, that's my story.
Thank you, Mike and Erin. Any questions for them, for any members of the board?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add that I met with the Warren Committee last night to give that version of the presentation as well and to take questions from them to, you know, take a step back and talk about the big picture in terms of budget and the challenges facing Milton this year. So we had a nice long conversation about those, dove into some details and, you know, so they're aware of where things are at and awaiting further information as we all are.
Mr. Zulus?
Nick, I didn't mean to give short shrift to this presentation. It, I looked through it quickly, and I thought it was, but if it's new, please, please feel.
No, 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 that is, I just wanted to add that in addition to that, I had.
Oh, okay.
With the Warren Committee.
Oh, okay.
I appreciate it.
All right, okay, but feel free if you want to present this. I mean, well, I'm subject to the chair's.
The chair is in agreement, but only has one question. That is, do we have an idea of what type of a timeline we're working on?
So I think, you know, I think as Mr. Zulus indicated, you know, we're really waiting on that free cash number. We had further exchanges with the Division of Local Services today about when we can expect that. It has been reviewed at one level, sent to the next level for further review and approval, so it's in the pipeline. So, you know, we're hopeful, we're hopeful that we should have information by the end of this week, and that can move this process along a little bit more quickly once we have that clarity.
That's great. That's something against the. Thank you. No further discussion. Should move to item number thirteen. Discussion approval, letter to Massachusetts Housing Partnership, regarding responses to questions for the development of a request for proposals for Milton's Town Farm. Everybody has that document as well? Had a chance to review it. Any comments, suggestions, improvements? Mr. Zulus?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the letter to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership regarding responses to questions for the development of a request for proposal for Milton's Town, Milton's Town Farm.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any further discussion? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment here, which is that, you know, in Milton, we have, we've approved like ten forty B proposals, which offer some affordable housing. And while I am in favor of affordable housing in the town of Milton, I believe that the Governor's Stone Land isn't the right location for that. We are trustees of a trust that sits in, that the land sits in the town of Milton, but it's not owned by the town of Milton. And I believe that as trustees, that we should be abiding by what it says, which the trust says it is for the poor of the town of Milton. As trustees, we have a legal fiduciary, moral, and ethical obligation to follow the will in the trust. And I believe that when the definition of affordable housing is maximum seventy percent, that it could be for a Milton residence and that affordable aren't, if it doesn't by definition, poor. I don't think that this is the proper location for it. And again, I think as a trustee, we have that obligation. And so although I know some of my fellow members here feel differently, I feel strongly that that is what we should be doing, and affordable housing is viable in the town of Milton, but this is not the location. Town doesn't own this land. We're trustees for land, and we're following what the will says. And based on that, I personally cannot support a letter, but if my fellow members want to do that, that's fine, but I can't support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Mr. Wells?
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So I I hear Roxanne's, Ms. Musto's concerns, and I agree with a lot of them. One of the things that I do worry about this is that, you know, where we can only apply for the seventy percent resident, you know, referral, I don't know that the trust allows us to to allow affordable units on this. Roxanne is right that the will is very clear. The poor Milton, I don't know how we let thirty percent residents, outside of residents, residents from outside of town live here because, heck, we could easily fill it if it was a hundred percent. My bigger issue is this, and this is really a new one, is that, you know, now that we're going back to Guile with the school project, that's clearly got to be the priority, and you add that construction of this school, plus the ice house, plus six forty-eight can, six fifty-two can, Winter Valley, and then another affordable at the town farm. We're really, I think, we're putting, anyone who watches just congestion alone and can't have any given day would realize and understand that we've got already ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag, and we're going to, with the school, going to go to fifteen. And to me, the school has to be the priority to making this happen. I just, I have concerns. I will vote yes on the letter, but to the two things, to Roxanne's concerns and to the two things that I just mentioned, you know, how do you address the thirty percent non-resident on a piece of land that is specifically deemed in its will for the benefit for the residents, the poor of Milton? And then on top of that, I think the school in this area, which is going to be directly across the street from Governor Stone, has to be the priority. So we were going here, so this is my comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Chair had a couple of questions. I had asterisk this doubly. One is the issue of the poor. And we had a little bit of a discussion of that at our last Governor's Stone meeting and a sense of difficulty in ascertaining. But today's poor would be relative to the poor of the seventeenth century. But I know there are economic historians. If we can do calculations like constant dollars and so on down the line, and all types of retrospective and prospective analyses, I would like to see if we can ascertain what a contemporary twenty-first century version of the poor would be, as intended in the will. And secondly, I had no substantive issues with the letter, except talks about Milton's Town Farm. And I'm still trying to help us understand that we have one role as select board members and one role as trustees of the Governor's Stone Trust. And the remaining town farm is really owned by the trustees. It just happens to be located in the town of Milton. And I'm wondering if the trustees shouldn't have a right to say something on this as well. So I wanted to ask Mr. Freitag for his opinion on some of this. And Mike, you may, from your experience, have some perspectives as well, but those are two questions that I've had in my mind on this. Welcome back, Kevin.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. Did you want me to try and answer both of those questions?
Well, I think the second part is probably more in your domain.
I agree. So I think can you, the second part of the question again, I just want to make sure I have it.
And that is that the Town Farm is the responsibility of the trustees of the Governor's Stone Trust just happens to be located in the town of Milton. It could be passed out that way, looked at from two viewpoints. Should the trustees have something to say on this, as well as the select board members? Do we have all our ducks in the right rows?
So I think that the best answer I can give to that question is that the trust, they have something to say on it. But I don't think that the select board is prohibited from asking or from moving forward with this letter without the trustees also signing on. It seems to me that the select board can do so in that, and then and share that information with the trustees of the Governor's Stone Trust, but I don't think that the select board is prohibited from making this request.
But at the same time, the trustees have the right to chime in.
Ultimately, the trustees are going to be the ones that are going to have to decide how the property is used and respond to whatever response comes back to this letter, so that the trustees will be involved in all of that.
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think the letter does point out that the trustees, the Governor's Stone Trust, will have a final review of the financials for the project. And it it does point out that the decision is with the Governor's Stone Trust in their effort to best honor the will of Governor Stone. And it does say that we, this is the Affordable Housing Trust and the Select Board, believe the Governor's Stone trustees should serve as the awarding authority. So I think, I think there is certainly plenty of reference in this letter to the fact that this is not the select board ultimately making this decision. This is the select board acting with Affordable Housing Trust to get information for the development of property owned in Milton by another body, the Governor's Stone Trust. So, and I think the letter makes clear that the Governor's Stone Trust is the ultimate decision maker for it, but it's the select board and Affordable Housing Trust that are trying to get some information about a possible development there.
And I read it exactly, read it exactly the same way. In my my dichotomy, I was just wondering if the trustees, even though we're one of the same, shouldn't too have some say in this? And that's an item that we can discuss later as trustees without impeding what we have here. I just wanted to bring that to the surface so that we exercise our full role as trustees. And I know it's sometimes an awkward situation when the same people have two different, and they are, they're not just distinct, they are different roles and responsibilities regarding this. And Kevin, I don't want to put you on the hook in terms of economic historians, but I'll I'll try and do a little bit of homework on that and see what my surfaces resources, because I've seen that type of analysis done. It's a long time ago since I've seen it. There are those capabilities, and it might be of value in particular in respect of the question that Ms. Musto raised. Mr. Wells, did you have a comment that I see? Oh, you all said. Okay. So. We have.
Mr. Chair, thanks.
Okay. We have a motion before us. It's proposed.
I seconded it.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Doyle? Yes. Excuse me. Apologize. Number fourteen, discussion approval, review and evaluation of proposals for the Kinder Branch Library, selection of the most advantageous proposal. Everybody has those materials. Nick, can we turn to you for this, please?
Sure, the town issued an RFP at the end of the last calendar year with the submission deadline last week. We received two proposals for the Kinder Branch Library, one from Discovery Schoolhouse, Inc., in the amount of $500,000 to operate it as an educational institution as they do currently. The town received a second proposal from a company titled Weathersfield LLC to purchase the property for $400,000 and convert it to four two-bedroom units. As part of the evaluation process that I did on my end, I did reach out to the building commissioner to verify that these uses would or would not comply with the zoning bylaws. He did respond that the Discovery Schoolhouse use does. As a nonprofit, they are not subject to some of the zoning regulations. Otherwise, Weathersfield LLC's proposal to convert it to four two-bedroom units would not comply with the zoning bylaws as of right and would require a variance from the Board of Appeals. Those are the proposals you have in front of you. I did distribute an evaluation rubric to help you as you made your way through the proposals, and we're trying to evaluate them. Lastly, I just want to note that one of the components was to do reference checks. I have reached out to the references listed in both, by both proposal proposers, rather. I have received two positive reference checks for Discovery Schoolhouse. I have been unsuccessful in getting a response from Weathersfield LLC's proposed, reference checks, rather. I would recommend that if the board does make a selection of a most advantageous proposal, that it's subject to completion of those reference checks. And I would report back if there was a negative reference check on the selected proposer, which just to report and just to provide that information to the board. So otherwise, the board is able to discuss, evaluate, and recommend the most advantageous proposal if it wishes to do so at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Any questions for Nick about this? And Mr. Wells? Are you muted, Richard, and then follow? I think you will be, Erin. I keep doing, sorry.
So, Mr. Chair, so just a little history. So the select board has engaged in this over the past several years on behalf of the library trustees, who are the owners of the building. So my first question is, Nick, are they aware of the bids? Are we doing this without them? No, are we keeping them on the loop on this at all? Like, I know that they had an expert tell, they've had an expertise, what they've thought that they, the value of the property is. Are they, do they, are they aware of this at all, or do you think we should be telling them this?
We distributed, I've distributed the proposals to Will, who shared them with the trustees. We did also extend an invitation to attend the executive session listed on the agenda. The board ends up going to executive session. I know one member of the trustees intends to join for that, and Will will attempt to if he's able to, but we did, yes, communicate that information and let them know to do so.
Well, I need it. Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nick, I just want to make sure that I got this crystal clear. So this is town property overseen by the town, so the select board or the trustees of the library. I understand it's kind of wonky, but town property. But town property, we're making a decision on whether or not to sell it. And one of the proposals is from a 501(c)(3). And that 501(c)(3) can buy the property and do whatever they want to it to fulfill their needs, correct?
They can continue to use it as a, as a school as they propose to do so under the zoning bylaws.
Perfect, but, but it is our town land and we're selling it to a 501(c)(3).
That is one of the two proposals.
Okay, awesome. Thanks so much.
Ms. Mostow?
I, I just wanted to clarify for anybody that's watching that my son is a library trustee, so I wanted to put that out there and I have filed a disclosure form. So I did want to make sure people knew that as we're discussing this. And my other question would be, did the school department in Milton look at this as a potential site for anything? I know I'm coming in late into this discussion, so I did want to just ask that question.
Many times.
They did, okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Zulus?
I was just, I was, I was just going to say yes. And, and the, the, and just, just as my memory is that it was the size and the, the, the property wasn't going to be, the, the, the size and, and, and the other aspects of the building weren't going to be useful for, for a school that could really help out with the
Playground, playgrounds and all that stuff you'd need for a school.
Yeah, was really, and I don't remember the full analysis because it was about three years ago when we went through it. But it was fully vetted by the school building committee.
Ms. Mostow?
I was just going to say, the reason I actually asked that was when my kids were younger, Keds used to be over there, which was like a half-day kindergarten program and kids from all over town used to go there. That's why I asked that. Thank you.
Mike, I don't, hands down, all right. Is there a motion on this item? Anyone wishes to put forth, Mr. Zulus?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, and, and as a, as a preface to the motion, I'll, I'll just say that, you know, in, in reviewing the criteria, I thought that the Discovery Schoolhouse was more advantage, more advantageous with respect to zoning. Was more advantageous with respect to the surrounding neighborhood. Was more advantageous with respect to historical preservation and was, appeared to be equally advantageous with respect to financial viability. I didn't, and we just heard Mr., Mr.
Ron Decker?
Ono, talk about, sorry, I forgot your name, talk about the, the references. So, so my motion is to select the proposal of the Discovery Schoolhouse as the most advantageous proposal, taking into consideration the price and all other evaluation criteria. Oh, in addition, the, the, the price was higher, they're willing to pay more. And taking into consideration the price and all the other evaluation criteria in the RFP, subject of course to negotiations.
And also subject to the reference checks that
Yes.
recommended earlier, that would be part of the motion. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
But if we're going with the discovery, he did get the references on that one.
Two of the references, I don't know if you asked for more than that, Nick?
Yes, and, and the criteria does state that somebody will be ranked lower if they have a negative reference. So I would say subject to no negative references, and I think that will, that will cover me. And if there is one, when I complete those reference checks, I will report that back to the board.
Is that, that okay with you, Aaron? Okay, Mr. Wells?
So, Mr. Chair, I hear Mr. Zeus's motion, I'm just you and I have been this the longest, actually me the longest and him the second longest. I'd be more comfortable, especially given what the appraisal came in at. That's a significant difference here to at least maybe postpone. I'd be way more comfortable having some conversation with the library trustees and the executive director first before we, if, if they're okay with it, I, I would.
I'll withdraw.
Are you okay? Well, that's, that's my only
Yeah, I'll, I'll withdraw the motion, Richard. I, I don't know that there's any time sensitivity this week as opposed to two weeks from now. Unless Nick feels differently, so I'll, I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was my one concern.
Okay, so that's something we want to set up, schedule? A subsequent select board meeting?
Yes.
Great. Anything further on this topic? I don't know, fourteen, if not, we'll go to item fifteen, Mr. Milano, please.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, if I could just maybe perhaps for some clarification. So we do have on the agenda to go on executive session tonight, a, a member of the trustees is available to attend and participate. Will the board intend to, to have, engage in that executive session? And I'd ask that town council just weigh in in terms of process here in terms of whether having an executive session conversation about the value should come before or after selection of an advantageous proposal. If it does not matter because it's a big picture conversation about the value of this property.
Mr. Chair, so the, the Select Board can go into executive session to discuss the value of this property regardless of where the thirty plus S is. So in other words, you table the motion to accept that bid and have an executive session tonight to talk about you. If you wanted to have a meeting with the trustees about value, I believe that you could also do that, and the way to do that would be to have both boards post an executive session. Select Board did with Anac a few last week or within the past couple of weeks. And then you would have a joint executive session where it could be just usually this would, it would be only appropriate for the Select Board to have the executive session because you're the body that owns the property. But this is a unique piece of property in the way that it pound, but it's managed by the trustees. And the proceeds from the sale of the property will go to the library trustee to be did for the library. So there's, there's really a, a union here of interest between the Select Board and the trustee. So I think it'd be entirely appropriate for an executive session where they discuss this matter together and, and you could do that. You know, schedule permitting of the boards.
Nick, it's, yeah, of, of reading my mind and if that's the outcome, would that mean that we would then withdraw the executive session or defer the executive session as cited on this meeting's agenda? Kevin?
You, you certainly could, you could, you could have your meeting tonight and the Select Board could have a discussion or regarding value, which is permitted as the agenda item that's on your agenda, or you could postpone and, and have a meeting at some later time.
I'd just see if we could wrap up the direction that we want to take, Mr. Wells and Mr. Zulus?
I'm fine with whatever, whatever's, whatever's, you know, going to get this done. But it, just to Kevin's point, if we meet tonight, we can't have a trustee in tonight's, we can only discuss amongst ourselves, correct?
No, you could have a trustee there tonight. That would not undermine the purpose for which the executive session was called and it wouldn't destroy the decency to discuss the value. You could still do that.
I'll do whatever the, I'm good. That, that explains, I'm good with whatever the majority wants to do.
Hi, Mrs. Wells, let me go to you first.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, we, we do have a trustee, we have the library direct, and the library director here. And so I guess the, the question is, if, if, if we weren't going to have an executive session in which they could participate, would we, would we ask them to participate now in open session and offer whatever they want in an open session? But if, but if the, if the idea is that they can participate in an executive session, perhaps, perhaps that's the way to go.
My, my preference would be since they're here, to have them with us one way or the other. Michael, I'm totally with you. And Aaron, I, I says from a nod of fans that others are as well.
Yeah, this has been hanging over our heads. I mean, Richard can tell you forever. I can tell you from being on the warrant committee, it's been hanging over our heads forever too. We've got two proposals. I'm just, they're never going to get what it's appraised for. None of the bids have ever come in close to that. Here's where we are. I just, I'm at the point where it's like, let's move on. Let's vote, let's move on, let's close this up, close the books on Kitter Branch, let Discovery Schools start doing their thing. If that's where we're going to go with the vote. And, you know, if these people are here and they want to, they want to, you know, hear that it's, what the prices are, that's fine. But I thought that Nick or you, Mr. Chair, were already talking to the library trustees about, about the appraisal and how things weren't coming in at the same price.
The appraisal had been delivered, but they had no discussion. So would it be reasonable to invite the trustee and the library director in for this open discussion? And defer the executive session to the model that was recommended, Mr. Faitag?
Yeah, I would just add the following, if, it certainly is fine to have the, the, the regarding. Let me just look at the agenda item. I mean, your, your agenda, really the review and evaluation of the proposal. So just consider that if the trustee wants to take, add some information regarding your review Google of the, the proposals to the solicitation, that would be appropriate under this item. If you want to have a discussion regarding the value of the land strategy regarding selling it, then that's appropriate for executive session. And I, and that's the only place that you have that discussion fight on your agenda is in executive section. I would just also add that if the, if the member of the library trustees that's here tonight to participate, they're not permitted under the open meeting law to then share information or share their opinion with other board, with other trustees outside of an open meeting under the open meeting law. So there, there might be some some good reason to have a separately scheduled meeting if the trustees want to weigh in on this. The Select will do it together as opposed to perhaps the trustees meeting on their own, trying to discuss what, you know, what, what is to be done to say. It, it seems to me that that's probably appropriate for a joint meeting of the boards rather than separate meetings.
If I heard you correctly, you're living toward possibly not discussing this further this evening, but going into the joint executive session, that would be the least limiting approach?
Under the issue item that you have here, you're talking about proposals. That, that's really within, you know, deciding which proposal to accept is really within the select distinction, certainly.
You have the cash train to, Mr. Zulus?
I was just going to say, you know, we have them here. Perhaps they could, they could, they could join us for both and, you know, to the extent that they want to weigh in on the, the public proposal here, I suppose they can do that. And then if, if we're going to have an executive session on value, we could, we could do that. But if they are here, perhaps we could hear what they, what they intend to address.
Hey, Mr. Wells?
I agree a hundred percent with Michael. Let's, let's, let's try to do both of these. Yeah, and then let's, town councils describe what we can do in public and then we can, if they wish to come in an executive session with us tonight, discuss value. We can, if not, I'm sure they're watching, they've heard what Kevin said, we can not go in an executive session and, and schedule a later meeting and have the joint executive session.
Exactly.
Both of them.
The last piece is, I just want to be clear, I, I've heard there's a trustee and I've also heard some people suggest that there are more than, that there's more than one trustee here.
The director, the director is here, Kevin.
I, I want to avoid a situation where a quorum of those trustees are now going to be discussing something that, that would be problematic.
Okay, so I think we're agreed that we're going to invite the trustee and the director of the library in with us now. Okay, so Sean, could you please promote both Christine Hudlin and Will Adamcheck to the meeting? Okay, Chris and Will, Will, you still muted?
Good evening.
Chris and Will, thank you for your patience. Great to have you with us. You've heard the discussion today relative to the proposals. And welcome, any comments and insights you wish to share with the select board at this time?
I just have a couple, so thank you for inviting us. We were invited. I've been on for over two hours waiting to talk or not, so thank you for letting us in. And I just want to speak one thing is to the presumption that the trustees are against either of the bids because that has never been stated. We were provided the RFP, we were provided the two bids, we were provided the appraisal and we have reviewed them. And we're not here to argue about what the decision is. We thought we were asked to, to weigh in on, on what was happening. So that's why we're here. And, you know, I heard your, your comment regarding, I think it was you, Mike, that was saying, you know, why you were weighing onto one or the other. And I, I don't want to say that I'm weighing to one or the other, but I'm just curious as to why you think one of them has more reasons regarding the historic preservation than another? Because it seems like neither of them are touching the building on the outside or doing anything on the outside. And then one of the other criteria that's in there is the financial viability. And honestly, I think either of the proposals would, would be good for the town and the community. We certainly need housing, so any kind of housing proposal for me would be a very positive thing. We also need schools, you know, preschools. You know, the Discovery Schools provided a lot of, a lot of benefit to our town over this time. But financial viability, if they're looking to, I think, finance the entire thing with a $25,000 down payment. So the financial viability, can they get enough, you know, students in their building to pay a mortgage? Otherwise, we are going to have this property back in our lap again at some point in the future. Because I think if something happens to it, if I read correctly, it comes back to the town for purchasing back or getting it. So I just wondered if that was anything anyone had, had thought about, so.
Responses to Mrs.'s comments, anyone? Mrs. Zulus and then Mr. Wells?
Sure, and, and thanks for the, thanks for the, the feedback. My view of the, on the historic preservation is that there would be more changes to the building if it were turned into housing rather than if it were kept as it is today. So that was, you know, very simple view on that. And then on the viability, I didn't think either one of them made the case that, that it was more viable than the other. I thought they were equal on that. And maybe I didn't make that clear, but that was my, that was my view of that.
Mr. Wells?
So without getting into numbers to Christine, Christine's my concern has been for you, your trustees, you are, you know, the delta here. I know it's our vote, we have to make the decision. I think you saw where Mr. Zeus wanted to go with this. Is this something that you could live, that you're comfortable that you could live with?
Will, you're grinning, I don't know.
Well, you may see, well, you know, I am in the process, in the business of interviewing people. So I, I just because this is really a unique thing is, I'm going to say, I've mentioned this before. I mean, I think I first walked this property with you six years ago. It was the first time I, six years ago, so. And I know the number that I heard that day from the realtors who were there, we're nowhere near that today now that, okay, so it is what it is. But I just, I just I'm inclined to support where Mr. Zeus is going with this as long as this is something you, palatable to you, because it is a big delta and if not, then I guess I'm prepared to go back and do the best we can for for your board and for the library trust, you know.
Will, you're recognized.
All right.
That was quite well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and first of all, thanks to the entire select board and to, to Nick for the work they've been doing on this project. Like Richard just said, it's been six years, it's been longer for, for, a longer discussion for the trustees. And I won't speak on behalf of the trustees, but I, I will say that, you know, And I won't speak on behalf of the, uh, trustees, but I, I will say that, you know, um, in looking at it. You know, uh, the facts are the facts right now, um, we might have heard one number six years ago, Richard. Um, and we might have gotten very excited about a number we heard six years ago, but it's, it's six years later. Uh, this is not the first RFP process, there are not twenty-five people looking to bid on this property. Um, and, and so I think we have to, there's what we want, um, but then there's being practical about. You know, what the market is telling us, uh, at the same time. I think the, the sale of this property has the potential to, you know, you know, uniquely benefit the library going forward for many, many years. Um, I think, um, that this property, like Chris suggested, if it stays in the town's hands much longer. It could also, you know, be a liability, financial liability, um, it's not getting any younger. So, again, I won't speak on behalf of the trustees, but I think that we are, we're aware of where we are this date and time. And, uh, appreciate, uh, you know, the thought and the RFP process that, uh, that you've been putting, putting together, so.
So, Chris, I, I thank you, Will, just for, I know. I, I'm thinking of asking Mr. Zulus to reintroduce his motion. If, if that's, that's, I mean, that's.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're, you're, I mean, to go back to that first, my first visit with you, Chris, and Will was. At that time, it was your, your, the trustees' interest was, did the town have an interest in the building, that was our sole purpose of being there. It wasn't for the select board to take the responsibility of putting out this, it was. It was the law, that, that it was the legal process that got us to this, and, but it. That's how we started with this, you know, was, was the town interested in a surplus building, was the schools interested in a surplus piece of property? But here we are, is, you, you're very, you're correct, well, we're six years later. Mr. Chair, I, I, I'm, I don't hear any reason why not to, I, I, that's, um, that's why I wanted to hear my. I'm thinking of asking Mr. Zulus to reintroduce his motion.
Hands from Mr. Zulus and from, uh, the southern.
Yeah, and I, I'll just say, subject obviously to what Chris has to say, but I, I would say that the motion is subject to negotiations, right? So we are, we would be selecting, uh, what we deem to be the most advantageous pro- proposal, subject to negotiations. So, seems to me that would allow, Kevin, you can correct me, but that would allow an executive session to start to, to talk about value. And talk about potential negotiations, so that, that is, that would be part and part, that is part and parcel of the motion.
Um, and I, I guess I just would say that we're, we're in support of what you're trying to do, so we were trying to do this six or seven years ago. I mean, I worked, I can't tell you how many hours I put into trying to get us to this point, because you are now the ones. Putting in the maintenance on this building, and that could grow potentially very, very, very soon. Um, and I guess all I was just looking at was all the criteria that we had, and one of them was the financial viability and. Um, that to me does seem, and I'm not saying it's against Discovery and for the other person, because you don't have anything on the other. Um, the other potential bidder, but that if, you know, you agree to this and the building comes back in six months or a year or whatever. Um, you know, that, that could just be another problem on your hands, so. Uh, you know, I think that I can speak for the trustees that were in support of selling the building, we were not trying to get. A sale at the appraisal that we got six years ago, that would have been wonderful, but that was six years ago. And we're not there anymore, and we know we're not, so in the meantime, we've all been supporting this building, and I'm sure Bill Ritchie could add a lot to what he's been doing over there. Um, so. And I think we will agree to what you do, and if you can get more than what's been offered, I think that would be great for the town and the library, so. We're, we're in this together, so.
So where do we wanna go, what members?
Do you wanna motion, Mr. Chair?
Is, do, do you wanna wish, do you wish to make the motion, Mr. Zulus?
I, if, if, if the members, uh, if it's the will of the members, and it seems to be, at least from the nodding of heads, so I will. I will renew my motion to select the proposal from Discovery Schoolhouse Inc. as the most advantageous proposal, taking into consideration. Price and all other evaluation criteria set forth in the RFP, subject to negotiations.
And to no negative.
Correct, yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a second, Mr. Zulus' motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, is there any further discussion? Your roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Richard, you muted? There you go. Richard, just so that you know, if you missed it, it's been moved by Mr. Zulus and seconded by Ms. Bradley. The, the motion has been, uh, you can't hear us and we can't hear you, Richard. No. We've lost you, you, you've lost us. Do you wanna, uh, no? Then what's the best approach, log out, log you reckon, right, well, he's gonna go try something. Yeah, well, that's just a moment, please. Can you hear us, Richard? No. Do you wanna try, see if we can hear you? I think he messed up, chopped off, so they can log back in. I got disconnected automatically a little while ago, so maybe something similar has happened to him. With his, uh. Audio system. Hit back. Said you are connected to audio, can you hear us? Richard, do you wanna try your phone? No, Sean, is there anything, uh, if you're listening?
I am listening, he is, um, he's, he's currently in, his video is up and his, uh, and his audio should be good. Mr. Wells, could you give us a sound test, if you can hear me, can you say something to confirm that you can hear us? I guess that may be a negative.
You can't hear me, Lynn, huh?
Yeah, we can hear you.
You're bad, you hear me?
Yes, sir, yes.
I can't hear you.
Oh.
All right, Richard, we have a motion that has been made by Mr. Zulus, seconded by Ms. Bradley. On a roll call vote, Mr. Zulus voted yes, and the vote comes to you.
I, I don't think he can hear you.
They lost again. This was a first. We can hear you.
So by the sounds of it, we can hear him, he cannot hear us, right, so.
He probably needs to turn up his computer volume, because he's had it in his ears.
We can hear you.
Hear me, all right, we're in business, we're back in business.
Okay.
Mother of God, that was a first.
We wanna ask you how you did it.
So I vote yes, I, I'm sure you voted by now, so.
No, we, we just, uh, started the voting process, um, just to recapture. Mr. Zulus moved, Ms. Bradley seconded, Mr. Zulus voted yes, the vote comes to you.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. So this is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, just for a moment, I, I just, Chris and Will, I, I know. Know how much time and effort you've put into this, and I know what your hopes were. But hopefully this is a win for everyone, Discovery School gets to remain in town and. Um, while start the dollar amount, I'm sure you envision having six years ago. Um, this is a significant piece of cash that hopefully will help you with some of the projects. And the operations of the library going forward, because we know how busy you are, we know how much the library means to the community, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to item number fifteen, discussion approvals, select board meeting packets. Uh, Ms. Musto, can we turn to you, please?
Oh, sure, um, I know that when we went to our Saturday meeting. Um, we had talked about, you know, putting the packets online potentially, I know that Nick had said that in Medfield, that's what they did. In terms of putting the packets online, so if residents wanted to see what things we were voting on or discussing, that. They could look at it ahead of time, and where we do have a citizen speak portion at our meetings, it might give them information that they could review. Sometimes we have warrant articles, um, that they could review ahead of time, because also when they go to the warrant committee, sometimes articles for town meeting. They can't, there's no process for a resident to go before, um, the warrant committee, as they can before our, um, select board at Citizen Speak. And it's just, um, running for office, one of the things that we heard a lot was transparency. And the need for being informed, and I think what better way to do that than have the packets online with the information that we're looking at? So that the residents can look for it, I mean, physically, they could go up to the town hall at any time and ask for all of that information, and we would. Have to provide it for them, so it just is another way to be transparent. So I would advocate for that and hope that the rest of our select board would think that that's a good idea, thank you.
My understanding is that there are some other communities that do this, um, Mr. Milano, do you have any familiarity with that practice elsewhere?
Yes, um, I, you know, it's a practice that varies from town to town, it is, it is a practice that we followed in Medfield, where we would post. Packet, um, simultaneously, um, with the agenda each, each week or ahead of each meeting. Um, happy to incorporate that, that procedure here in Milton, if that's the will of the board. Um, we would be able to set that up pretty easily on the website and, um, can establish a dedicated page for it, for each packet, um, from here on. Here and out and in backfill of some recent ones as well, um, happy to do that, and we can get working that pretty quickly.
Ms. Bradley?
Um, I actually would love this process, because I can never find my packet in my email. And so I actually had to email Nick tonight and say I can't find my packet, so this would be, uh, a help to me. The one thing I ask, and I, I just wanna make sure that we're clear about this, is that anything that comes out in the packet that's a draft. That we put a watermark on it that says draft or proposal, or something that says that it's not finalized. Because my concern is that people, um, will read it and think that that is what the final proposal is. Um, and I just don't want misrepresentation or people taking things out of context. When they get something, so if that's a possibility, um, that would be greatly appreciated.
That makes all the sense in the world. Roxanne, as the proponent, um, do you wish to make a motion formalizing this, or would you be comfortable with a consensus?
Uh, whichever way you all want to do that is fine, I didn't know if any of the other members had any opinion on it. I didn't wanna cut anybody off, so if anybody else has anything to say on it. Um, but I, I mean, I'd make a motion if no one has anything else to say, that we approve to have our packets. Posted with anything that's in draft format to clearly have the draft written across it, I would be, um, that would be the motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair. Seconded, any further discussion, seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus? Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Move on to item number sixteen, which is town administrator goals, just as an update, and I think I mentioned in an earlier meeting. Think can I keep in touch on this topic?
Sure, yes, thank you, I, you know, we had, um, intended to have something for feedback tonight, will work to do that either on the thirteenth or the twenty-first. Um, it's already been close to half a year, so we would like to get these down and then to, to be able to have a, um. A good evaluation process, um, in the next several months, um, to look towards next year, um, and to build upon this, this first year together, so I appreciate that, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Milano on this topic? Seeing none, item number seventeen, discussion approval, request of proxy and occasion to reserve the Baron U and vote zero. The two thousand twenty-three summer concert series, June seventh, twenty-one, twenty-eight. July twelve, nineteen, twenty-six, twenty-seven, August two, nine, and sixteen, being the main date. A children's concert is scheduled for Thursday, June eight.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the pack to power request with the dates, um, outlined by you just now.
Thank you, Ms. Wells, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto, moved to second at any discussion.
Thank you, Bonnie DeBoer, all your hard work, it's a lot of work for her every year coordinating all these bands and all these events.
And well appreciated.
Absolutely.
But increasing in with, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, thank you. Next to the, uh, our town administrator's.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, few updates this evening, um, as I had mentioned previously, I, I did attend the warrant committee meeting last night to talk about. The, uh, pic, big picture on the budget, um, as well as any town meeting warrant articles, and I was there, um, remotely last week. When they had, um, representatives of the school department in to discuss, um, school department's budget proposal. Um, as you may have noticed, Dr. Burrows was in town on Tuesday and Wednesday of last week, he stopped by town hall, um, he, Glenn. Amy Dexter and I sat down for a while to chat, it was nice to meet him, and he was at the warrant committee meeting as well with, um, the representatives from the school department. Um, Consolidated Facilities Director Bill Ritchie has, has informed us that he's planning to retire, um, at the end of April. Um, a long distinguished career that we spoke a bit about in terms of green communities earlier, so. Um, you know, as, as many, as you know, Bill took over there and started, was the first consolidated facilities director. Um, that really took on the challenge of, of managing the town school facilities as a whole, as a combined department, has done a great job. Um, will be a big mess, and we've been talking about that transition and getting ready to post that position and, and work with the, our counterparts at the school department on finding. Consolidated Facilities Director to step into his shoes, however hard that might be. Sergeant Michael Dillon retired from the, uh, Milton Police Department, um, after a long distinguished career. Uh, leaves the department without a Dillon for the first time in, uh, many years. Um, we also had two new employees, or new two police academy recruits start, uh, yesterday at the Plymouth Academy. Molly Dillon and Aiden Johnson, both of whom did come through the cadet program at the police department, so we wish them the best of luck as they make their way through the academy. Um, as a reminder, special town meeting is coming up on Monday. The moderator has, um, electronic voting, working with our IT director, um, that will be, um, working on. In preparation for that meeting to, to try out the equipment on Monday night, um, with the town meeting members. And I think, so I just, the last thing I wanted to mention, and I'll follow up with some additional information, we did get notification from. Department of Housing and Community Development late today, that the town is in safe harbor through, um, meeting its housing production plan. Um, through May of two thousand twenty-four, that is, that date is subject to. through May of two thousand twenty-four. That is, that date is subject to depending on when some approvals have come through. So we'll follow up some additional information, but that's good, some good news in terms of the town being in safe harbor for many forty B projects in the time being. And, uh, Mr. Chair, I believe that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bethel. Are any questions for Mr. Milano? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple, just a couple, just a couple of points. So, um, and I don't know if this is going to be Nick's, but it's been a while since we've heard anything on nine forty-one right now. Hasn't I got the number right? It's been so long, so I don't even say the. Um, I don't know whether, it actually, I don't think Nick's had to update us at all since he's been here. Of where we are with that right now, or just where they are on the, I'm saying nine forty-one. I think it's actually. What numbers of Mike Solas?
This is the property next to the.
Yeah, Meg Lane, yeah, Meg Lane.
Oh, Meg Lane.
Project, Meg Lane, yeah. It's just been a while. I just. Where they own it. And, and just, um, I just want to take a moment just to, well, first on Bill Ritchie, who was my cohort, cohort for many years and we collaborated on, I can't even count how many things over my ti- our time together as department heads, but, um, we talk about voids. Nick's words don't even do justice. When we talk about giants of this community, like when Mary Gormly left, that John Cronin left, Bill Ritchie's been just as big in what he did as the first consorts and e- even before in his time, you know, as director of the schools, when he worked just exclusively for the schools, but to take on the enormity. Because very few people realize how big a business we are, the town of Milton is, and how much we own and how much, how many nuts and bolts there are to make the wheel called the town of Milton work each and every day. It's incredible. And then I would be remiss, um, if I didn't comment on Michael Dillon. By the way, Molly Dillon, there's no relation on that Dillon, so. Many people who've lived in town, Michael's father, George, grew up in Dorchester St. Greg, who's actually right across the street, younger than my father. His father joined the local police in nineteen fifty-six and, uh, they moved here from High Park at a young age, George with all six, I believe, six or seven Dillon kids. And they lived at the Men's Arms House. That's where they lived for over thirty-five years at the forefond. George Dillon was the first, one of the first criminal control officers, a part-time job. In addition, was police duties. But his son, Michael, was one of the first cadets coming on in nineteen eighty-six, and Michael's been a great asset to this community. Truly, when we talk about police officers, men and women taking ownership of the community they serve, um, Michael has truly done that. And, and I quote Lieutenant Chuck Apurua, who said to me at his retirement party, which was our Saturday night, said, this is really going to be strange to be there and not have a Dillon working for the town of Milton Police Department. So, so Michael, I just want to say, not just as your friend, but as your former chief and someone who collaborated with you, we, when we started, we patrol officers together. I was a sergeant, this lieutenant, um, congratulations. Your family has served this community well, and your retirement comes well deserved. So thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Nick.
We're all good, Mr. Wells, and thank you for those comments. And the others. And thank you, Mr. Milano. Chair's report, I have, uh, two items. Uh, first is a call received from Senator Timmeltie reporting that it was his understanding that the MBTA has scheduled the demolition of the stairs at the Adams Street Station. Scheduled for March first, does he understood it? And does he further understood it without immediate replacement? And this certainly is, uh, we have discussed in the past, is that demolition without immediate restoration is unacceptable to the town of Milton. Uh, so I, I know I've shared that with everybody and I just wanted to, uh, make sure that it was known to the public as well. And, um, so what comments anyone might wish to make on it? You said that, uh, I can do so under this agenda item, if that's all right with Mr. Freytag. Mr. Zulus has his hand up, Mr. Chair. Mr. Zulus.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, perhaps we should add it to as an agenda item for that, for our next meeting.
Uh, you want it next week, you say the twenty-first or the thirteenth?
I mean, I, if, if, if they're, if they're getting ready to do it, we should probably talk about it sooner rather than later. So maybe.
Well, I wanted to clarify the date. I think this is of an emergency nature and I would go for the thirteenth as well. Do what we can on the date and keep it on the agenda until we have something worked out. Okay. And the second thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, this past week, uh, pre-whatever it is that hit me, uh, Ms. Bradley and I have been before the planning board, um, where Ms. Bradley presented her draft proposal on a lighting bylaw. Let you know that occurred and, Aaron, any comment that you wanted to make on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and a big thank you for your words that evening. Speaking both from your experience in town and the conservation commission and, and how this really is something that impacts everybody across the, the entire town of Milton. I thought it was a great evening. There was a lot of robust conversation. It was, we heard a lot from the citizens of town. There was a big letter that, um, I, I believe is coming to the planning board with eighty signatures in support of the, of the bylaw. Um, and it ended with, um, the chair of the planning board, um, I think she agreed that we would do a working group moving forward, um, with a few folks, um, to really drill down and make sure that, um, that it was acceptable to all. Uh, one of the sticking points would be the grandfathering in because, um, as I said at the meeting, the attorney general, um, made a ruling back in two thousand twenty that, um, exterior lights are not part of the structure, so they, um, they would not be grandfathered in, which is, um, great news for our ducks and wildlife and, um, other people that this might be impacting. So it was a really good evening and I look forward to further work on it.
And thank you, and a well done to you. Any questions, uh, Ms. Bradley? Seeing none? Let's go to our future meeting dates. And thank you for bearing with me, uh, Monday, February thirteenth, uh, Tuesday, February twenty-first. And then we're getting into the month of March, Tuesday, March seventh. Thank goodness it's not the seventeenth. March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And, uh, related to that, we want to discuss, um, meeting location, getting consensus from the board as to uh, where we would like to have our non-Zoom meetings. They would be hybrid in three locations. One is the Cronin Conference Room, another is the Council on Aging, the third is the Blue Conference Room. Those are the three that are viable for that purpose, right, Nick?
Yes, that's correct. Those are the three to, uh, Mr. Chair, from the warrant committee's been meeting in the blue room in a hybrid format. The school committee has used the Council on Aging in a hybrid format. We obviously have been in the Cronin, um, although it's a little tight quarters around that table, so wanted to engage in this conversation here to see if, um, the board would prefer to move to one of the two other locations.
So it's, yeah, it is. Right. Thank you, Nick. And the idea is to give us a home. Um, a sense of where we would be and people would know where we would be rather than moving around. We know the Zoom is going to expire on the twenty-third of March. Mr. Wells?
So, this is my seniority here. So, you know, historically, as most people know, the Cronin has been the home of the select board for as long as I can remember. The change came, we went from three to five. You know, it wasn't, it was pretty easy to do with three, but five, and I refer back to Ms. Cornell when she was chair, she was the one who first brought it up that perhaps it was a little more difficult having five plus a town administrator and administrator, especially when we get into significant issues where you know, a lot of people are going to come before us. So that's how we found our home. Our home actually became until COVID, C O A and kind of guess we were there for three years, so. I guess we could go back to the Cronin, but my thought is, particularly when we get to issues of significance to the community, we're definitely going to have to leave. And just my one thought might be is if we venture away from the, uh, the C O A as our home at times where we needed it, maybe had it again, because Nick is correct. The blue has really been the home of the warrant committee for as as long as I've committed, they've been the first user of that possible property for this is. I'm in my thirty-ninth year, my thirty, my thirty-nine years, so I don't know, um, I just, I just want to give a little history on how we want to go on the C O A, what made it happen.
Thank you. All the comments? All the recommendations? Mrs. Solas?
So, so I appreciate that, but, but I, I, you know, my, my experience has been at the Council on Aging. I think that's a much more user-friendly venue for the board members, for the staff and for the residents. Um, it, uh, it was, it was much more comfortable in there for when we had, when we, we have residents come in and certainly for the, for the board members, so. So I, I, I would weigh in favor of going back there.
Mr. Musto?
I would go for either the Cronin or the Council on Aging. I'm just wondering, is there an extra cost because, um, we'd be on another day going to the Council on Aging. Is there any extra cost to that or anything with cleanup and things like that? Just wondering. From Nick.
No, we would need to coordinate that piece of it and, um, that would be taken care of, um, within the regular courses.
Okay, thank you.
So historically, Mr. Dennehy, who was, uh, he had the key and he would, he would lock it up each night when we would leave and that's, that's how we would was, and allow us to leave is, is to my, all the points Michael says, I agree totally with. But it allowed us to kind of go as we needed to, you know, we did a one in the morning, it could be, especially some executive sessions, we had a couple that went really, really late. It's an exception, not the norm. We want to keep it that way. He, Nick would be able to secure the building while we leave.
Uh, Nick, I have a question, if I may. Um, we've used the Cronin room with the hybrid. It seems a little bit awkward physically. And we're going to have hybrid in place for a while at least. Uh, how is the uh, Council on Agent with the hybrid equipment? I haven't seen that myself, and I don't know if other members of the board have.
So this, um, the setup for the school committee, um, they have sat across from each other, across from the room with the projector to, so that everybody's kind of right. Sometimes there's a table in front of the projectors, so with the big screen with anybody who would be, um, on screen on, on the projector, the pull-down screen that's at the end of the room. So we would just have to coordinate the room a little bit, um, to make sure that both members and the public can, can see that with a little bit more, um, a little bit more ease. Um, in terms of Cronin, we've adapted it now that the, the screen that we've been using will now appear on all the cam, all the TVs in that room um, going forward. So, you know, there'll, there'll be multiple places for people to look for the speaker when the Cronin is being used. Um, but we, you know, we'll, we'll adapt as we go in terms of kind of what's the best fit for this hybrid setup. So either, either place will work, we'll just have to, um, set up the tables in a certain way so that everybody can see the screen with a little bit more ease than we had been in Cronin.
Aaron, would you like to weigh in, please?
I honestly would not, Mr. Chair, I would like to move the discussion along.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said I do not want to weigh in. I would like the discussion to move along.
All right. So we have, uh, looks like a, a split decision. The question I have is, uh, the numbers of people we can accommodate in the Cronin room. And, uh,
But isn't it only until March when this thing runs out? March twenty-third?
When all together Zoom runs out. I don't know about hybrid, if that's, is anything that's going to allow that to continue?
The rules would allow for people to, to participate remotely as long as there's a quorum in, in place unless there's an extension, which could conceivably happen, um, as it has been occurring for the last few years.
Okay, whatever's easier for, yeah.
Okay, so Richard, you say Cronin, Mike says Council on Aging.
No, I say the Council on Aging. I, I definitely, I'm with Mike on this.
Okay. Then we have a Council on Aging, it is. Okay, at this point in time, um, I'd like to declare a recess. Uh, do we need to vote a recess or can that chair just make that declaration? I'm trying to recall.
When we make an emotion just to, so we don't, we can't go on by making emotions up.
Yep. Thank you, Richard.
I'll make a motion that we, that we recess.
And go to the government.
Over the ghost.
Seconded. Seeing no discussion, Mr. Solas?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, so we are now uh, in recess. We will. Agenda? All the order, let us identify everybody again as trustees. How the Doyle Service is here, Mike?
Mike Solas, trustee.
This is my, Richard Wells, trust.
Aaron Bradley, trustee.
And Roxanne.
Roxanne Musto, trustee.
Okay. Now, first, uh, second order of business is discussion of full grant request to the Milton Community Food Pantry. And everybody should have received the document dated January eighteen. And we have someone to join us.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Patricia Brawley is in the attendee pool and I can promote her if you'd like.
Do that. I thought, I saw her earlier. Thanks for joining us. You're muted?
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Why don't we turn the floor to you? We have your letter of January eighteenth and your request.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to come forward and for considering our request. The Milton Community Food Pantry, where I have been serving as director since two thousand and five, is, uh, vibrant, has made it through our pandemic and, uh, hopefully is on the other side of that. Unfortunately, as you all know, um, there have been recent downturns in terms of, um, the cost of food, the cost of living, the economy. I recently heard that, uh, food stamps are going to be limited in, um, their availability to, uh, participants in this area. Um, we are currently serving, uh, a population of, um, five hundred and sixty, let me just get that number correct, five hundred and thirty-six Milton residents on a regular basis as enrolled participants at the food pantry. Um, that includes one hundred and sixty-five families that we serve and, um, one hundred and sixty children and ninety-six seniors. We see, um, on an average weekend, uh, Saturday, we're open twice a month, we serve over, uh, a hundred and ten families each time we're open. During the holiday seasons, our numbers were close to our maximum of a hundred and sixty-five. We, um, have recently found with the increasing numbers of participants and the, um, availability of donations from some of our, um, our donors who have passed away, that we are at this point in time running about ten thousand dollars short of, uh, where we are, um, our expenses, in other words, our expenses for the past twelve months through January ninth, um, equaled one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Our income during that same period was a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Obviously, uh, the deficit between income and. Um, obviously, uh, the deficit between income and expenses is something that we will be addressing. Um, in the near future with some fundraising, um, events. We do have some, uh, reserve funds that are available to us. We retain those funds for replacement of items like freezers and, um, tables and cabinets and so forth. Um, the community has been very generous to us. You, as the board, have been very generous to us in the past several years during the pandemic. You have allowed us to participate in the ARPA funds and to, um. Could continue to serve our population and fulfill our mission. We are hopeful that at this point in time, you would be able to assist us with providing, uh, a resource for, uh, dairy products. I'm not sure how many of you have chickens in your backyard, but I'm thinking about it very seriously, um, in the near future. And unfortunately, most of our folks who are participants at the pantry don't have the access to, uh, and the, uh, purchase of, of, uh, chickens and location to put them. Um, we do want to support the program which allowed us to, uh, make available to our participants milk and dairy products. Uh, other dairy products and eggs. Um, we can only now do that with, uh, a gift card situation, a system where we provide, uh, the access to local markets. To be able to, uh, allow them to purchase those items. We would strongly, uh, recommend that the board consider the mission that we have and the service that we provide to over five hundred Milton residents. Who have nowhere else to turn at this point in time. Um, we. Ask you to consider, um, our request and help us to fund the program, which will provide for dairy products, milk and eggs for those who are in need. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to make a motion if that's okay. You can mute it off, huh?
I just had a question for Pat, um, thank you, Richard. Um, and that's your estimate of approximately four thousand per month?
Yes, right now, given the numbers, we have, um, we have, um. Yes. It, it's three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars a month, and that's based on the population that we were serving on January seventh.
And that's an approximate, which makes the forty eight thousand an approximate, and if we went around.
Of a single year, yes.
Fifty thousand.
So that would be my motion, Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we, um, fund this request in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to the Milton Community.
I'll second it.
Moving to seconded. Discussion. Ms. Bradley.
I have, um, I have two things to discuss. Um, one, I just wanted to clarify, um, people are not being kicked off of SNAP. What's happened is that the federal government, Congress, in fact, Congress, everybody, uh, not our state, um, is the one that finally stopped the emergency COVID payments that people have been receiving for three years. So people are going from receiving two hundred and eighty one dollars a month, um, down to as low as twenty three dollars a month. So it's going to be a big hit. So I want everybody to be clear about that. Um, Pat, can you explain something to me? You said forty eight thousand was the request, but yet you're already in arrears ten thousand?
We are.
So. I'm just doing quick math and that says fifty eight thousand to me. And I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, how much money we are, we are, I forget again, is it seventy thousand that we have right now or something?
I asked, uh, Mr. Will, I don't know if that for you today, Nick? We have, it's our discretion for.
Yes, um, just pulling up the exact figure.
Of ninety nine thousand?
Yeah, it's about ninety nine thousand, there's about five million, five point four, four million and, uh, the, the trustees have access to anything over five million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Ms. Bradley, you went to right where I wanted to go and I wanted to learn a little bit more about that shortfall. Is that from? Previous calendar year or fiscal year?
It is, uh, based on the twelve months ending January ninth.
Okay. Um.
Mr. Chair, if you wish, I will amend, I amend my motion to fifty eight thousand for fifty.
Is that a second, Ms. Bradley, I see you in a smile.
That was the original, and I was going to say it seconded.
You did, okay, so.
I mean, I made it a fifty, Mr. Chair initially, because I wasn't sure what the number was.
Right.
I thought it was closer to fifty than it was to ninety, so.
Was that ten thousand, that, um, shortfall, I wanted to find out where it was, what fiscal year, and it has not been met yet. Okay, so Roxanne, are you agreeable to that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Made amended. Vote call vote, seeing no discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? Thank you, Pat, fifty eight thousand dollars.
Thank you so much. You, you can't even imagine how excited this makes me and how happy we will, we, we are. Thank you so much.
We appreciate all of you and those who work with you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night, Pat, you can sleep in peace tonight.
Absolutely, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Miss. I have number three is discussion approval grant request from the Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center Milton campus. We appreciate Rich Fernandez.
Mr. Chair? Excuse me?
Sorry, Roxanne.
Um, I'm going to recuse myself because I am an employee at the Beth Israel system. Okay.
Doing that, and I'm glad you are. Um, I was with your colleagues yesterday. For obvious reasons, Rich, it's nice to see you again, welcome and, uh. We had a meeting, uh, you and your chair. Nick and myself, maybe just a couple of months ago, so welcome back.
Hey, thank you very much, and for those that I know, uh, good evening, for those I don't, uh, nice to meet you, I'm Rich Fernandez, I'm the president, and it'd be Eddie Milton. And yes, I think, Nick, you might have been on the job a month, uh, when we met, see if, probably don't remember much from there, but I appreciate everybody's support. So I just want to say that was one of the best, uh, moments of the select board I've ever seen, the see Patricia's eyes light up to fill the gap of the, her budget shortfall. So, um, really appreciate that. Uh, again, you all have been huge supporters of the hospital, obviously, the hospital's a big part of this town. The last several years have been really rough for us, uh, but we are plugging through it. Uh, we're continuing to invest in our facility. We're about six months done from updating all of our inpatient rooms, which I don't think had been touched. Uh, Mr. Wells, you said you had been here thirty nine years, I don't think those inpatient rooms had been touched in at least thirty, then they needed it. Um, we have come to the select board and the Stoughton, uh, the trust, uh, for, for many years for some support. Uh, primarily, obviously, we support the town in many areas, the schools, council on aging and other programs. But we do provide about a hundred thousand dollars a year of free care to Milton residents who either have no insurance or can't afford to pay. So that's generally been the, 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 the angle that we, uh, have come to you all before, and you guys have been very generous to, uh, over the years. I think it's been pretty consistent about fifteen thousand dollars a year, uh, to help offset, uh, some of that, uh, uh, free care to Milton residents. So that's what the consideration is, uh, for tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, President Fernandez, the floor is open.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request of Beth Israel. We B I D still rich or we B I?
Yeah.
I see B I L now around the, on the, in the hallway.
Yeah, Beth Israel Leahy is the parent, we're still Beth Israel Deaconess Milton Hospital, yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to approve the request of B I D Milton in the amount of, I believe it's fifteen thousand, am I correct? Is it fifteen thousand even? Is there a second to the motion? I'll second the motion. Hey, discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, Rich. Um, so I, I do have a concern about this, and I, I may have perhaps should have raised it, uh, in previous years. Because of the, the, the obligation of the governor Stoughton trustees to provide funds for the poor. And I know the, 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 the idea that, well, you provide medical treatment for the poor. But, um, we heard Ms. Brawley go through her revenue and expenses, and you know, the hospital, it's a different story, right? I mean, the hospital, I mean, I, I don't know what your revenue expenses are for this year, but you know, uh, we, we know from public filings. Um, two, three years ago, two thousand twenty, your revenue less expenses was nine point eight million dollars, right? And, and you have net assets of almost a hundred million dollars. And so, so it's, it's difficult, I, I think, in light of, of having an organization with a profit of almost, at least three years ago, or. Two and a half years ago, of almost ten million dollars of revenue less expenses. When we see that juxtaposed against the, the food pantry, it's, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit difficult. So I, so, so I, I'm, I'm, that's, that's a little bit troubling, um, uh, for me, just, just because of our obligation of the, the governor's trust, Governor Stoughton trustees to provide for the poor. And, and so that's, that's, um, that's an issue that I'm, I'm just, I have to, I'm having a little difficulty with.
Yeah, I mean, we are nonprofit, uh, Mr. Zulus, we do invest, uh, all that money back into the room refresh project was about a ten million dollar spend. If, if, uh, code last year, I know that was pre-COVID, uh, Mr. Zulus, but we lost fourteen million dollars last year. We're on pace to lose about ten million dollars this year. Um, yet we're still trying to use our balance sheet and quite honestly, the system's balance sheet to continue to invest. So I, I get it, we make money, but we are a nonprofit. It goes one hundred percent back into our staff, into our, uh, facility, which we've been diligently trying to update for, uh, at least the six years that I've been here. But I get it, and, and it looks like we make a lot of money.
Yeah, and, and I understand, and, 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 um, you know, the, the, the last numbers were, were about six months into COVID, it was like through, uh, September two thousand twenty. Those were the, 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 the last numbers that are public. And, and you know, I, I went back and I, I tried to say, well, maybe that's what all the hospitals are like. And, and so I took a look at B I D Needham, and for the same time period, they actually lost, they actually lost money, right? They actually lost a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. And, and so it, um, so maybe the numbers are, are, are different now, maybe they're, maybe they're.
I'd be happy to share them with you, they're publicly available right now.
Oh, they are, yeah, because I.
Our system lost two hundred and fifty million dollars last year.
Right, right, right.
And we're going to lose, we're budgeted to lose as a system a hundred and thirty this year. It is not a good time to be in healthcare.
Yeah, no, no, I, they, they just, the four nine nineties with the AG's officer just through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty, so that's, that's, that's what I.
As you know, Mr. Zulus, I would provide you with our financials anytime you want them. Uh, so you don't have to wait for them to be publicly available, but I, and I get it, again, I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet if other people have time, but.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, so my thought, listening to. President and then listening to Michael's comments is. So this fifteen is to offset, just refer, Rich, to me, this, this fifteen is to offset. Costs of people who are unable to pay, uh, uh.
Yes.
So maybe, I mean, knowing just what I know of the, the population of, the patient population of the hospital, would it be amenable? And maybe this might. Um, address, Mr. Zulus' concern that we, we. We put a caveat on this fifteen thousand to be useful, um, the residents, residents of Milton who are treated at the hospital, who are needed. This would, would that cover it, Michael, for you, if we, if we attach that to it so that it specifically goes to people who live in Milton compared to people who we don't know, you know, whether they, because I, I'm just trying to think, because. We, we use this term, the poor of Milton, so often when we're in this realm, I'm just thinking of perhaps maybe that's a caveat.
I, I can double check my records, uh, Mr. Wells, but I believe it's over a hundred thousand dollars to residents of Milton. We give, we, we have much more free care than that, but I can double check that, and if you want to tie it to make sure it just goes to offset Milton, that would be perfectly fine by us. Because it, it well exceeds that number.
I was fine either way, but, but. Mike's point made me think of that aspect of our charge in this role here, so. I, I'm going to amend my motion that I made to be fifteen thousand, you know, targeted for residents of Milton who fall into this category.
I accept that, that's all right with you, okay.
Yes, it is, that's the second, yes. I can't tell if I won, Mike, over you. I'm just, I'm just trying to take a path here that works, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, it may, I mean, if, maybe if there's a way, we, if we said it was for the poor, you know, again, we go back to that phrase, for the poor, right? Uh, what does it mean for the, because it has to be for the poor, right? And so, um, and so how do you do that, right? How do you, I mean, with the food, again, if you juxtapose the food pantry, that's easy, right? People who need food, right? Um, and so. You know, how do you, how do you say, well, this is going for the poor of Milton, right? It can't be just residents of Milton, it's going to be the poor of Milton, so.
So just to follow up on that, so. Rich, you could, you can tell me where I go wrong. So obviously, someone who's in this category who has the, has no health insurance, right, they can't, they can't pay it. So from what I understand of the health insurance, because we still have the required, the state required that everyone has, so someone can't even afford. I'm going to call it COBRA, but I'm not sure if that's what they call it now, Aaron's shaking his head, I'm not, but if someone can't even afford the most minimal in healthcare, am I correct? I, I think I'm painting this picture that.
Or it's an uncovered service, there's many categories.
Sense would say that, to me, that person would. I would consider that.
There's many instances where people aren't, they either don't qualify, uh, of, or it's an uncovered service, uh, uh, depending on what it is. But that's what the definition of free care is, is generally people below, I think it's three hundred percent of the poverty level. So, um, again, I'm happy to come back if, if, if people want me to, you know, we can, we can tell you exactly who it will be funding and make sure it's residents and people under a, you know, a certain income level. I think, you know, three hundred percent is generally accepted as poverty level.
I get it, I, I'm going to stick with my motion, I, I'm fine with that.
Tonight's purpose is in this discussion, Richard, would. Um, this work. Needy residents of Milton?
It works for me. We can define that.
I'm fine, I've already kind of, I'm, I'm looking at. Counsel, counsel to my left ear, he's got the grim chin on, so I just want to, I, I know he's thinking, so I just, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it. I think, I think President Fernandez has demonstrated, I like, I get, I mean, having been in many of these houses over the years, I get why they're in this category and how they get in that category. The same as how they wind up at the food pantry, uh, it, it's, you can ride around, I've said this many times, you can ride around this town all day in a car or walk it. If you look behind closed doors, you probably won't see any of this, but. I just heard numbers, and you, so there's two entities, both the food pantry and the president of the hospital explaining to us some of the difficulties that do exist and the hardships that do exist.
Yeah, we could extrapolate easily, say that large numbers of the people who go to the food pantry are also going to go to Milton Hospital. When they have to go to the hospital. So, um, uh, in federalated administration, we caveat things by putting in the word needy, that's right. All of that.
I'm fine with that, I'll accept that, I, I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair.
Alright, so, Mr. Zulus?
Rather than needy, could we say, uh, Milton residents at three hundred percent of the poverty line? Just so we put a, put a definition to it.
Works for us, that's what, that's what the federal, the federal guidelines are, so.
I'll accept that, I'll, 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 I'll accept that as a friendly. You got that line?
Yes.
Your eye with that, Michael, I'll accept there's a friendly amendment, that's really okay. I think we're ready to vote, Mr. Chair.
Needy residents after three hundred, so I want to keep that word needy in there.
Okay.
Sure, the message in that, um, okay, we have a move, seconded, amended, amended. Think a roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you for being with us, Rich.
Yep, thank you, thank you all for your continued work. I know that you guys have some late nights and a lot of business cover, really appreciate your support.
We'll try to do that pretty soon, and, uh, thanks for having your clinic over in Quincy.
What was that, Arthur?
Thank you for having your clinic over in Quincy.
Yes. Yes, well, I hope you get there. Go there, go there before the emergency department.
My chair is still warm from being there.
Is it twenty-four seven? Is that twenty-four seven, Rich?
No, it's about, it's ten hour, it's ten hours a day, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Friday, and then eight hours on Saturday, Sunday. But I think everybody knows our neighbor hospital Signature had a massive fire today.
Oh, yeah.
They had to transport a hundred and eighty patients. We got about fifteen of them. I'd just say friends and family, if it's a life-threatening emergency, go to our emergency department. If not, go to Quincy, because the next few days until that place opens up, I think our emergency departments, we, I think we have fifteen people boarding in the emergency department tonight. It's gonna be a tough couple of days until they open back up. And we have no idea. It was a bad electrical fire, so.
Knock on wood. Knock on wood.
Yeah. So, hey, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Take care. Have a good evening. Oh, Roxanne? You're back with us. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Our fourth item is discussion approval of Governor Stoughton Trust Vice Chair position. We discussed this at the last meeting. And I think as we discuss more and more about Governor Stoughton Trust and its purposes and so on the line, we can see that we need something of this nature, at least I can. And I put it back on the table for your consideration and to see if there is anybody who would be interested in serving in this capacity. Mr. Wells?
I'm just thinking, just from, you know, the board turns over every, you know, there's always change. I'm just thinking for ease of operation, that in the absence of the chair of, you know, the chair of the select board being the chair of the, the Governor Stone trustee, that the vice chair of the select board in his absence or her absence becomes the chair of the Governor Stone trustee. No? I mean, it just, it just, it's, it's, you know, like when the chief's away, the deputy chief takes over. That, that's just my thought. I, I, that's where I'm at on it. I don't have a lot more to say on it.
Thanks. Ms. Mustum?
Um, yes, I was just gonna say, I, I mean, I looked it over in the agenda, thought about it a little bit too, but I think it puts an extra layer on it. Where we already have on the select board, we have a chair, we have a vice chair, there's a secretary. But the, these are gonna be three or four separate meetings a year. But I don't think that it's really, it just puts another layer, I feel like, of bureaucracy on if you have another position like that. But it already could just, the person who's the chair or the vice chair of the select board could act in those positions for the same purpose. It gets a little crazy otherwise, I think.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was my understanding that you had brought this up originally because of the workload. I can only imagine how much workload there is as being the chair of the select board and the chair of the Stoughton Trust. I would assume that whoever was the vice chair of the Stoughton Trust could do a lot of the work to ensure that things were still moving forward and kind of keep eyes and ears on that, all the projects that are happening out that way, or hope to happen out that way. So that was my understanding. Am I, am I correct in, in paraphrasing that?
That's a good synopsis.
Okay, so I really do think, you know, having not served as a chair and not volunteering to serve as a chair, I, I think it is something that, that would be necessary to help lighten that load and to ensure that whatever was happening upon, in regards to the trust, there was kind of a point person that would be the vice chair, from what I'm understanding. So I, I actually think it's a good idea to help lighten the load.
Thank you. Ms. Mustum?
I have a question in terms of how this was handled before we got on the board. My understanding is in the past that the town administrator also helped out with this in terms of gathering information and so forth that was needed for this. So I'm just trying to understand from previous members that have been on the board with Governor Stoughton issues and things, how was that handled before?
Every mic, Richard, you would.
Yeah, I mean, so it was not handled not unlike the way the select board is handled. The, the town administrator can assist the chair of the select board, just as the town administrator assists the chair of the Governor Stoughton Trust. So it's not, again, that's just as we wear different hats when we do different things in our meetings, the chair of the select board and the chair of the Governor Stone trustees wears, wears different hats when he or she does those different things outside of meetings.
Right. I, I agree. I mean, for my whole life, I mean, not just my professional life, from, you know, the select board of the Governor Stone trustees. And in, in the day, going all about, you know, John Crowden, he, when, when we had tenants and they rented the buildings and it was all run through the office, that's been passed on from John to David Owen, David Colton, Kevin Byrne, Mike Dennehy, Emory Fagan, Mike Dennehy, and now to Nick. So I'm, 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 again, I, I, I think having the vice chair, and this very well could have happened tonight, Arthur. I mean, you might have been sick and not come in and Mike Zulus be running the meeting. So I'm, we have so much on our plate now, and I think of my sixth year compared to my first year, this is just, I think that, I think just having the, you know, the vice chair fill the role of chair, because I don't think, Nick, you can confirm, I don't think in the will, it actually really refers to the chair. It just refers to the. It doesn't have.
Right.
So and, and I don't think the work that, you know, the biggest thing they ever did was Pulte, you know, the sale of the thirty-four acres. And that was really town council and Kevin Byrne did it all. So we'll just vote around at the end.
Hi.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, I, I think, Richard, makes sense in terms of the efficiency. If we're gonna have a vice chair, probably makes sense to have the same, the same officer of the select board, just as we have the chair of the select board. Probably makes sense just for efficiency to have the, the same person as, as the vice chair. Just because I, I was just thinking about meetings. If you weren't here, we'd have one person, and it was a different person, we'd have one person running, running one meeting. You want, just, it wouldn't be efficient at all. So, so I think if we're gonna do it, what Richard said makes a lot of point. It makes a lot of sense.
I was just gonna say that I'm sure that the responsibilities that Nick has currently have changed a lot from the days of yore when other people were doing things and just changed in different ways, whether that's more efficient now or less efficient now. You know, I personally, Nick is still not, I mean, he is about six months in, but I don't think, you know, we try this for a year, we see how it goes, see if it lightens the load, see if it's worth doing. There's nothing saying that this has to be concrete forever and ever. We can change it in two years if it's not working, or if Nick says, hey, I want to have more responsibility with this, then we can do it that way. There's nothing wrong with trying something new and seeing how it shakes out and, and then readjusting as we learn from it. That's part of life. So, Mr. Chair, I, I hear you and I hear what you're saying, and I think that's something that needs to be respected at this point in time. Because really, honestly, he's the only one that knows what the load is right now and where we're heading. So I'm all for trying it and seeing how it goes.
And I, I'll just add a couple of things. One is I know my own experience, anything I had to learn about the Governor Stoughton Trust after I came on the select board, I had to hunt back for. There was no one person really to go to who was sort of the keeper of information. I know from people in the community, they don't know about the Governor Stoughton Trust. Those who know it exists don't know much about it either. We can do much more with communications. So I mean, I'm, I'm agreeable to what you're proposing. I have great respect for those thoughts. If somebody wants to make a motion that the vice chair of the select board would say co-terminously is the vice chair of the Governor Stoughton Fund, that would be fine with me.
I don't think we need to make that motion, but I'll make it if you, I mean, to me, the vice chair is the vice chair. Like, if you weren't here tonight, I'll, to me, Mike will be running this meeting, just, but if you want an emotion, I'll.
I think for the reasons that have been cited and better articulated by you and than I, under the circumstances, I, I would go with a motion. And I, if you would accept my motion as a second, then that's it.
So I'll, I'll make the motion in the, in the absence of the chair, that the vice chair serves as the, is the second, just as this, as he's the second to the chair on select board issues, so is the vice chair of the Governor Stone.
All right, so we'd have a vice chair of the Governor Stoughton.
That's a simple way, yeah.
So it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Say done, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Mustum?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you. We all, and not yet. We're trying to get us there, and I want to be more than anybody else, believe me. Next quarterly meeting is proposed for April eleventh. Can we put that on our calendars?
Okay.
The Governor Stoughton, please. And now your emotions were turned from the Governor Stoughton Trust into.
So moved.
Go into the select board meeting. Okay.
It's me tonight, Michael. It's usually you. I'm up at time, like.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Mustum?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, everyone.
Can I get better, Arthur?
Yeah.
We're not done.
End executive session.
I have a journal in my thing.
I have a journal from the Governor Stone. To go into, to return to the select board meeting.
That's why we're gonna have to clinic commentary.
So, so we're legit. So now you want a motion, you're gonna make a motion, you want an executive session.
Correct. And I moved to enter executive session to discuss in open, an open meeting law complaint filed by Philip Joe Henning on January eighteen, twenty twenty-three against the Milton Select Board in the Court of General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, Subsection one, sometimes referred to as Purpose One. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Mustum?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Our question at this time, do we want to, based upon our early decision on the library, go into executive session tonight? Why do we want to have a good session with the trustees?
I think we're okay on the library. It just.
We agree?
Yeah.
Fine with me.
We took the action. I think that was the big, that was, at least that was my concern, so.
Okay, so we'll end the recording. Sean, can you take care of that?